The fire presentation is off. Scott just said we're not doing.
Thank you for joining us. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of September 25 to order. If you would please stand, those who are able, and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. I acknowledge that the land we gather, live, and work on today, currently known as the city of Palm Springs, is the original homeland of the Awa Kaliente Banaquilla Indians. The sovereign band of Awa Kaliente people have stewarded this land throughout the generations and continue to steward this land for future generations. We honor and respect the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land. City Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
All right. And before we have our first presentation, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Riff Markowitz, co-founder and managing director of the long-running, I think, 23 seasons of Palm Springs Follies, who died on Wednesday, the September 17th. He was 86 years young, and his memory will certainly be a blessing in Palm Springs for many years to come. Okay, we have a presentation this morning by Debbie, who you can't miss her and her orange, and there's a purpose behind that. So please come and share with us a little bit about Hunger Action Month.
Testing. Oh, there we go. Thank you so much, Mayor DeHart. Palm Springs City Council members, city staff, and Palm Springs community members, thank you so much for having me here today. I truly appreciate it. Find Food Bank is the Desert Regional Food Bank, and as the president and CEO, every year in the month of September, I try to make my rounds to every single one of the cities to talk about Hunger Action Month. And it's also why I'm wearing orange today. All across the United States, the Feeding America food banks, the regional food banks, which Find is part of that system, we try to light up an orange and use the color orange to bring the attention to all of the communities that we still have food insecurity that we are battling every day in our country. But we also use orange as a color of community togetherness and celebration because there are so many people that partner with the regional food banks, as well as the nonprofit organizations that Find Food Bank supplies millions and millions of pounds to every year in order to make sure that we have equitable, healthy, nutritious food access to the people that are in need. And so during this month, I like to give some statistics too, as well, to the city council members, so that you guys can understand the work that's being done collectively in the community over the last 12 months in order for you to continually stay aware and understand the facts and know what's going on in the city, so we can continue to pair and partner together with all of the amazing work that's being done. I always like to think about it in the sense that we try to be as perfect as we can, but when it comes to food insecurity, we always have the ability to do better. And so with that, let me explain to you the statistics that we have over the past 12 months, specifically here for the city of Palm Springs. The total amount of fresh and healthy produce and other nutrient-dense, rich foods that we've distributed in the past 12 months is 2.3 million pounds. When you look at those big semi-tractor trailers that we all love on I-10, that translates into about 60 truckloads that have come directly into the city and has been distributed by Find and the community partners that we stock and supply, like the LGBTQ Center, like DAP, like Well in the Desert, and some other places that distribute. For the pounds themselves with regards to produce and fresh and healthy nutritious produce, which we know is one of the most difficult things for people that are food insecure to access because of the cost of it, over 50% of those pounds are in the form of fresh nutritious fresh produce. With regards to the data that we have of the people that we have served in the city, we've had over 90,000 community engagements when it comes to food resources that are being distributed here or outreach services that we have here in the city, and that's in the last 12 months. So all of the agencies and Find Food Bank combined together are over 90,000 client interactions. And then, in addition to that, when it comes to pounds of food rescued from retailers and grocery stores here in the Palm Springs area, we've rescued over 600,000 pounds of product from the retail stores that have then been redistributed back into the community again instead of going to landfill. So for us, these are great numbers. Right now, Palm Springs still has a food insecurity rate, as pulled by the Feeding America data, which is a collective research that they do using third-party data sources, Census Bureau, and then unemployment numbers and another host of data points that they use combined together. It's one of the most thorough food insecurity research reports that are provided by Feeding America every year. For this past year, the city of Palm Springs still has a food insecurity rate of 15.9% of its total population. As a reminder, many of the times people think that the food insecurity rate is just combined of people that are homeless within a community, and that's not the case. Food insecurity is technically those that don't have access to regular meals on a daily basis and struggle to wonder how they're going to put two to three meals on their plate a day. So many of the people that we serve, 97% of them in fact, are actually people that are working in our community. They're fixed-income seniors, they're children, they're adults, they're people that are contributing members to the community. And many of them are making the trades between paying for food or paying for their rent, paying for their fuel to get to work, paying for medicines and health care. And we all know that those are the things that they have to pay for first, and they sacrifice the food that they're putting into their bodies to stay healthy, as well as the people that they are trying to support too, as well in their household. So for us, we thank the city of Palm Springs for being continual partner with Find and many of the other nonprofit organizations here in the city that are distributing food to those that are in need. We thank you so much for your 65,000 grant that you just awarded us to help support our mobile pantries that are coming here into this community. And we thank you so much for supporting lighting up orange within your city. We have the Desert Regional Hospital that lights up orange here in the city in order to show that they too, as well, are supporting Hunger Action Month and the fight against hunger. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and again, really appreciate you allowing me to make this presentation for you today.
Councilmember Garner.
Thank you so much, Debbie, for highlighting all of those statistics and keeping us informed. Can you tell us a little bit about what's happening tomorrow?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking. I wanted to focus on the city of Palm Springs, but thank you for asking. Find Food Bank, because of the amount of food that we are now resourcing throughout the United States, we have grown exponentially over the past decade. We were over capacity at the beginning of COVID already, where we were processing close to 12 million pounds of food back in 2020. And when COVID hit and the pandemic hit, we spiked to over 30 million pounds of food that we were processing to get out into the community as part of disaster response. And with that, we knew that it was time that we needed to grow our facilities, so we never turned food away. We built over this past two years a additional 48,000-square-foot facility that sits right next to our current building. And tomorrow will be our official grand open and ribbon cutting that all of the city council members and city staff are invited to, and the community and public are invited to the open houses as well that span over Monday. All they have to do is just email us and let us know they'd like to come and take a tour. So we hope that you were able to join us. I know that Councilmember Bernstein and Councilmember Garner yourself are going to try to be able to make it, but everybody on the staff are invited. So thank you for asking.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And before we go into the acceptance of the agenda, I'd just like to take a minute. First, I want to point out, why are the fire way back there and police are all up here in the front row? What does that say? I love it. Thank you. A few hours ago, or earlier this afternoon, I got, I received this letter from somebody here in the community. And I wanted to share it with you because it's the type of letter that really makes the entire community very proud about what we have here in Palm Springs. Dear Chief Mills, I needed to take a moment to let you know that I made, you made an excellent decision to promote Kyle Stern to the position of captain. He was the height of professionalism this morning when I interacted with him at Ruth Hardy Park. Captain Stern stopped by our morning group of dog walkers to introduce himself and chatted with us for a bit. He was patrolling on foot, checking out what was happening at the park, and he was generally interested in our opinions. The captain was very friendly and was actively listening to what we had to say. His responses showed clear thinking, maturity, good judgment, and above all else, fairness. I was so impressed with him, as were my friends at the park, that I wanted to thank you and him. You are the type of people we want as law enforcement professionals in Palm Springs. You are valuable to this city. So thank you, Captain. Appreciate that. And...
I would second that one, Mayor. Good job, Kyle.
Okay, next we have the acceptance of the agenda. Next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss. The order of the agenda may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items to be removed for a separate discussion. Are there any items staff or council members would like removed from the consent calendar? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. Item 1J and 1, sorry, it's a lot of items. Z, yes. And then if, I just have a couple of comments on K and I.
Anything else? Mayor Protem.
Pull Z as well, and then a comment on K and BB.
I'm sorry. Say it again. Pull what?
Pull the Z.
Oh, got it.
Uh-huh. Also have a comment on K and BB, as in boy-boy.
Sorry, Mayor, I do have to recuse from item 1D. That's just enough for the record. Thank you.
1B recues? D as in David Ready. Councilmember?
Yeah, M as in Mary, and O. And City Manager, you were gonna...
Yeah, he's next.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. Mr. Mayor, council staff would like to request that we pull item 1P, and we'll bring you back for a future council meeting.
Okay, but M and O, you're pulling for, off consent. Okay. Well, we only have a few more that aren't being pulled. Councilmember Bernstein.
I'm pulling all the rest. No, no. I am abstaining on 1E, and you pulled 1J. I have a comment on 1R.
And I'm abstaining from 1C and D to do conflicts with the organization, both two organizations. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the acceptance of the agenda with 1J, Z, M, and O removed, and comments on a number of items. Councilmember Ready made the motion, and it's seconded by Councilmember Garner. Very good. Motion carries. At this time, I invite our city attorney, Ballinger, to provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public, the city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Okay, next item is public testimony. Time's been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on agenda items only. Two minutes are assigned to each speaker. And first up, we've got Colleen Pace, followed by Dave Anderson.
Company, yes. Good evening, Mayor, and council members and city staff. Thank you so much for having us today to make the formal introduction of our new Director of Palm Springs Tourism, Gary Forsythe. This is his fourth week on the job, and he's already started to really integrate himself into the community of Palm Springs. He has a diverse background in marketing and brand, and we're so thrilled at what he can bring to the table to continue to elevate the brand for Palm Springs, as well as our new collaboration with Oak View Group coming in as well, with the added support that we'll have there. So really thrilled to introduce him and have him say a few words.
Thank you, Colleen. Pleasure to meet everyone. My name is Gary Forsythe. I'm the Director of Palm Springs Tourism. I've been a proud resident since 2023, and I'm truly excited to collaborate with each and every one of you, celebrating and growing the spirit of this amazing city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to take any questions if there's any questions or comments.
No questions, but is, Dave, are you not speaking?
Oh, I think I'm on the agenda later. I mean, for a transition update?
I don't know. We have you as speaker number two.
Oh, all right. Well, hi, everybody. My name's Dave Anderson. I'm Senior Vice President of Convention Centers for OVG. First of all, and I'll talk about it later with the transition update, couldn't be more excited to be here. Last 60 days has been phenomenal, and I'll talk about it in detail later. But as it relates to Gary, I got a chance to meet him about six weeks ago when I was first getting on board, and we had a phenomenal conversation. And his ideas and outlook moving forward for Palm Springs are fantastic. And we can't wait as OVG to work with him and also visit greater Palm Springs and Rob moving forward. So we're really excited.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Gary. We're happy you're here.
Okay, I'm not sure if Felix's agenda item comment, who knows?
Right here. He's general. Right here.
I know. I'm not sure if you're agenda item. Are you speaking on an agenda item, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers online? Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers online?
I think you have Michael Pickens for an agenda item.
Michael Joseph Picken.
Michael Joseph Picken, this is for all agenda items. And yes, I do have a meeting with the mayor. I do appreciate that. As I am living with HIV, every U.S. citizen under federal Ryan White Care Act are under Department of Defense, Department of War. Federal law, Trump state, and county law. Every communication from me is from a citizen living with a chronic medical condition. Every question and letter from me has a standard 48 and 72-hours response turnaround time. That is the industry standard. No matter who I am addressing, my federal reps will usually have me sign a release. BIPOC and sovereign sanctuary tribal taxpayers cannot disregard this, as even they are bound by treaties and UN law for the same standard. Last week was my 72 hours for my letter to Palm Springs City Manager, Mr. Stiles. All week, I have been addressing Palm Springs staff in trying to set a meeting with the mayor. I ask office staff should have access and ability to set any and all council members, especially the mayor's, schedules and appointments, even if tentative. My issues are all time-sensitive. They have been for five years. ADA requests for special needs accommodations, exception requests, take on a different priority and urgency for addressing barriers.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
No speakers online.
All right, beautiful. Next item is the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, just before you go to consent, the City Clerk's Office would like to acknowledge, for the record, we have two corrections on our minutes from the September 10 meeting. Items 1W and 1X have been corrected to reflect a no vote for Mayor DeHart. Thank you.
See, I'm just causing problems for you, huh? I had to make sure you were paying attention there. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without J, M, O, and Z. And we have an abstention on 1D and E. Motion was made by Councilmember Garner and seconded by...
Thank you, sorry. Buttons aren't working.
Who made the second? Councilmember Bernstein made the second.
Yeah, they're not working.
Okay, very good. Staff report on 1J, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of councils. I am Jeannie Kayes. I'm the library director. I have with me today Bill Wiley, the president of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. So item 1J is about naming rights for the Palm Springs Public Library. And on May 25, 2023, the city council approved a memorandum of understanding with, between the city and the library foundation for the purposes of fundraising and helping to support our library renovation and ongoing operations of the library. So right now, we are bringing to you part of that MOU that is required to approve naming opportunities. So naming opportunities costing more than $100,000 have to go before city council in order to be authorized. So we are checking with you to make sure that the areas that the foundation is going to fundraise for are areas in which you want to fundraise for and have names placed on them. So right now, the foundation is in the quiet phase, and they expect to have a public fundraising announcement in the next couple of months to advertise all of the areas for fundraising. And the foundation would love to discuss multi-year pledges and other donation options with potential donors. So today, we're requesting that you approve naming rights for the areas proposed, and happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. Jeannie, can you talk a bit more about these multi-year pledges? That's where I was a little bit confused about exactly how does that work?
And maybe Bill, you want to speak on this?
Yeah, thank you.
So we're mindful of the fact that people would like to give a certain amount of money, and we're capable of accepting that over a period of years. So when we talk to the donor about a pledge, we have a pledge card that they would review with us, and then they would commit to X amount of money over X amount of years. So we're happy to take that and prepare for that.
And, but does that also give them naming rights?
Well, it could, although you would have the final say-so of anything over $100,000. Anything up to $25,000, Jeannie has the approval for, and the city manager between 25 and 100. So, you know, we, in our discussions with folks, someone that wants to give $1,000 over three years is fine, but it's obviously more important when they say, "We're going to give you $25,000 over four years." So those are the discussions that we have with them, and we use the pledge card as a basis for the discussions.
Thank you. And then part of the naming rights for the library and its elements, it's part three here. Part 3B, it says term of naming rights. And so it says, like, less than $5,000, naming rights term one year, and as a whole chart. Can you just talk a little bit more about that? Because I wasn't sure how that worked exactly.
Right. We're not, we're not going to run around and rip names off of things that we place, but we want an opportunity, as the time goes on, to possibly resell that area. And it's proportionate based on the price. So anything $100,001 or more would be a 20-year term. So it would be like a generational gift. So your name would be on that area for about, for 20 years or longer. If we don't need to sell that space, it might remain longer. But it would give us an opportunity so that there's an expectation. So you're not saying, "Well, I gave that for life."
So if I were to give less than $5,000, I could get my name engraved on a chair? Like, what are we talking about here?
Right, and it's also, those costs are also related to the types of things we would name, because a chair has a lifespan of, well, not a year, I hope, longer than a year. But you know what I mean? So we want to just set a term so that we have a way to make a change if we need to, or if we are ready to do a refresh or something like that.
And are you going to be doing anything related to something more permanent? Like, I know college campuses where you can pay and have your name in a brick, you know? Things like that. Are you doing anything like that?
We are moving away from that. We are getting a digital honor wall or digital honor screen, and that will allow us to instantly update the information with the new donor's information. The bricks are real-time, labor-intensive. I've seen them where the font, you can't match the font, and it's just a struggle. So we think it's more in line with what we need to have a digital donation wall or sign.
Those are all my questions.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Councilmember Bernstein.
I got just one question, quick question and comment. On the, the potentially $7 million you can raise, is that going towards current things in the renovation plan, or new, or how's that?
Excellent question. Do you want to answer that?
Yes. So...
Oh, Bill Wiley is the president of the foundation.
And fellow shoveler at the, at the groundbreaking last week. So the way we're looking at this, Councilman, is $2 million to give over to Jeannie for enhancements to the plan that is in place now. I think she has...
They're already budgeted, or they're proposed as part of the renovation plan.
And then $5 million to get us started with an endowment, so we could provide substantial monies over several decades to the library.
That's terrific. I mean, terrific having private people give money to city buildings, so thank you. We seem to have, do quite well with that. I do want to make a comment. For the ones that don't come to council, I would ask, I don't know what kind of review there is, but this is people's names on the city building. And so I don't know whether it's shared with council ahead of time in case there's some issue, but I don't know, city manager, if it's between 25 and 100,000, if it's somebody who, their name could be on their city building, and how do we actually vet them?
Yes, Councilman. For the way it sounds, I think how it might work is if the library receives a gift somewhere between 25 and 75,000.
25 and 100.
25 and 100,000. Those are gifts that would probably merit notification of council members and letting them know about those, because those are significant gifts. And I would anticipate and expected to let council members know about those important gifts.
Okay. I mean, I'm not really worried. It's just good practice to know that. But, I mean, thank you for doing this to the foundation and for all the work you're doing for the library. So thank you.
We can't wait to make announcements about the gifts that are coming.
Yes, and they can call where to donate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you clear this? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor for a motion and second. Thank you. Then we've got item, staff report on 1M, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Teresa Galavan, Assistant City Manager. This item is an opportunity for the council to consider approving federal historic tax credit financing for the city's historic Plaza Theater. As you'll recall, on December 14, 2023, the council awarded a construction contract for the restoration of the theater. And we are slated to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony in November 21, in just a little over a few months, and the grand opening on December 1. To date, we have been working closely, as you know, with our partner, the Palm Springs Plaza Theater Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that has been doing significant fundraising for the restoration of the theater. As part of that fundraising effort, the Plaza Theater Foundation has been actively exploring the possibility of using federal historic tax credit financing to raise revenue for the theater's restoration costs and operations and maintenance. The city council approved entering into a letter of interest with the National Trust Community Interest Corporation, NT-CIC, on May 28 of this year. In the last few months, there's been significant financial and legal work that has been performed by the tax credit financing team. The group has been working on this, and it is anticipated that this financing would create more than $5 million in investor equity into the project from historic tax credits. And the city will net approximately $2.8 million. $2 million would go to the foundation for operations and maintenance in a reserved account for the process of this financing deal. And then $500,000 would go towards closing costs of the financing structure. The foundation and city staff believe this tax credit financing is worthy of pursuing. As such, city staff recommends that city council adopt the accompanying resolution. Attorney Ross Schaefer is here, our finance attorney. If you have any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer them, and the foundation is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to highlight this. This is sort of a new and creative financing mechanism. And this action is actually doing the four things. The ground lease agreement, the development services agreement with the landlord, the guarantees, and the stop certificate and agreement. But what I just wanted to ask, because this is, you know, creating significant value for the city for the Plaza Theater project, and it's the relationship with the Plaza Theater Foundation that's made this possible. But what I just wanted to ask the city attorney, and I know we've had plenty of discussions with your special counsel, that in all these documents, you have a comfort level that all the things that are in there that need to safeguard the city appropriately are there, and we've taken them. Now, I certainly have a confidence level that we have based on our conversations, but I'd just like you to explain that a little bit in your comfort level.
Yes, I do. As Ms. Galavan indicated, my firm's legal counsel, who specializes in tax matters, has reviewed this. And we feel very comfortable with the documents and the terms that are in the documents are able to accomplish the city's goals for this project.
Thank you. And I know this is, you've been doing a lot of work on this, as has the foundation. So I think we're ready to move forward, but I just wanted to highlight that this actually is a pretty important development.
Just to work on it, because not everything was totally clear in the staff report from the other point of view. So there were questions about, there's a leasehold payment, but that comes out of the money that we get from the investor. Is that correct?
Yes, there's funds, the $2 million that would go towards the foundation approximately for reserves for leasehold payments, operations, maintenance.
Okay. And when would we expect, this would be expected to close in the next couple of months? Is that right?
Yes, the closing date is coming very quickly.
Okay, all right. I've spent a lot of time with this. I've been liaison to the Plaza Theater Foundation. I know we have members here. Judy Blanchard probably spent hundreds of hours on this, so I appreciate all the work that she did and to help get the city, you know, a few million dollars for our building. So thank you for all that hard work. And this is something that is somewhat new, but I actually had another city reach out to us to find out how we're doing this so that they could do the same thing. So, thank you.
I think one of the items that was missing in the staff report, that some questions came up on, it wasn't noted that there's another $2 million that is going to the foundation at the same time that there's the $2.8 million of this program or the track tax credit deal is coming to the city. So there's $4.8 million. Do I have it wrong?
5.4 million.
And then there are closing costs, so it's approximately a complete investment of 5.3, 5.4 million?
Yeah, 5.4. 2.8's coming to the city, and 2 million is to the foundation.
Yeah, and the rest is closing costs.
And the rest is closing cost. And that's the piece that was not included into, where some questions came up in the public. So we have a motion on the floor. May we have a motion? Seconded by... All right, thank you. And then next item is a staff report on 1Z, please. Oh, oh, I missed it. 1O.
I don't need a staff report on this. I just had a question. And I think, in this, to the city manager, I think maybe the issue I had on the contract was revised. There was a lump sum on this contract, and someone from staff indicated that they were going to switch that out.
That's right, Councilman. There is, there was one addendum to it where we added, there was a schedule of payment, I think that was included to the, to the report that should be on your desk.
Do we have that? I don't see it in the, I don't see that one. Didn't know if it was...
Was it supplemental?
Perhaps. Tabitha Richards could come, Ms. Richards, our purchasing director. I know we did a supplemental addendum to this contract, right?
Hi, Tabitha Richards, Procurement Contracting Manager. We did issue a revised agreement, removing the lump sum costs that you're referencing, that was in the prior version.
Right, so are we, are we going to get that for supplemental? To the staff report, actually. No, page 22 of the staff report. On the agenda, page 22 of the staff report.
It was updated on the online version I have here.
Yeah, so I don't have that. Could I see that? Thank you.
And perhaps.
This was the the spreadsheet for the bids, but you were going to.
It was printed. Do you want me to bring my copy?
Page 21, bottom under compensation. First line says work will be compensated on a lump sum basis.
Right. Well, no, I don't, but but I guess the point, so so are we changing the language on here? Is that what we're going to do? Just?
Yes, so we revised the contract.
Okay. So do you want to pull this and bring it back with the revised, or do we want to just say it into the record of what we're revising it to?
No, it'd be good, I think, to put it into the record this evening and explain that properly so that council could move forward if possible.
Okay.
Yes, so the agreement was revised to correctly reflect and remove the lump sum table that was previously in there and outline the compensation by year, identifying both the media buy and the consultants' annual compensation as well as their hourly rate schedule.
And then would that be on the page before on compensation?
Yes.
To remove the lump sum there?
On page 20 of the staff report or page 14 of the agreement, the compensation term was revised to remove the lump sum reference and change it to a not-to-exceed basis and added the contractor may request monthly payments based on the percentage of work completed for the previous month if a detailed progress report is provided, subject to subject the amount requested based on an hourly rate structure detailed in Exhibit B. And that's what we added to Exhibit B.
Yeah. Okay, I do see that it's on there. For whatever reason, it's not downloading on mine, but I'll talk to you about that, how I can get this fixed. So I do see it. So thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I just have one one comment on it. And I guess it's, oh, I'm sorry, were you going first?
No, no.
You know, I know this this is for advertising for the airport within and marketing within our region, but and our visit our visitors bureaus advertise outside of the region, but I do, it all presents our brand and our brand awareness. And I do want to, I spoke to them today in a separate meeting and just to see if they could have some collaboration or some cooperation so that we make sure all of our branding messages are in sync when it comes to a Palm Springs entity. So I did mention this to the airport director, and hopefully we can do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other discussion?
One other thing, Mayor, I would like to just confirm that that there's, oh, there you are here, that there's some some coordination. I presume you're going to be doing this, some coordination with the CVB in terms of media buys and the whole media campaign. I presume there's some coordination.
Councilmember Harry Barrett, Executive Director of Aviation, yes, that is the case. We will be doing some coordination relative to that. Mr. Meyer can speak to that, and I can bring him up, and he can talk more about that.
Good evening, Council. Daniel Meyer, Deputy Director of Aviation, Marketing, and Air Service. Yeah, so we do coordinate with Visit Greater Palm Springs with our advertising. So as Councilmember Bernstein mentioned, they, Visit Greater Palm Springs handles inbound marketing to come to our destination, where our role is to coordinate advertising here within the Coachella Valley and our catchment area, which including the High Desert through the pass to Hemet, and also we extend into the inland empire with certain advertising, where we advertise certain services we have that, say, Ontario does not, such as our Canada nonstop flights. And so we coordinate with them to support both directions of filling the plane. So they advertise to fill the aircraft coming in, bringing tourists, and then we want to support that with local passengers and creating origination demand, which will help us in our efforts to get more year-round service. So we have to create, support local demand here. So we do coordinate with them to make sure we have good messaging in both 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 ends, but our messaging does obviously differ because there's tourism. Ours is local. But we definitely are working for the same goal of creating more year-round service, more lift, more connectivity to help our whole valley.
Thank you. Yep, Mayor Protem.
Harry, could you share a little bit about how the media buy compares to previous years and how its impact might might exceed the previous investments in in earlier years of how much that million-dollar media buy was able to get you?
Hi, welcome to Mr. Meyer.
So our media buying, so it's a, the million dollars we have in there is what's in our lineup and for our budget, obviously, so with our budget year, with our biannual budget. We build that number by working with our existing agency to seeing, you know, what rates are out there and what our efforts seem to be and how we need to target. So they help us to give us an estimate what we need to budget for this. And sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Just how does this new firm able to kind of leverage that media, 1 million, kind of further than the previous years?
Yeah, so that's what's, okay, sure. So that's what's great about working with an advertising agency is like if we were to go out in the street and buy it ourselves, we're buying for one airport, one buy, one, say, billboard, whatever, we'll get a certain, say, we'll get $1,000 for it. But you get an agency coming in, and they're buying for, say, 16 different clients, and they're buying a lot more, basically buying in bulk. They usually, they can leverage all that to get a discount, so they can actually take our dollars and stretch them further than I could just on my own because we're in a small entity where they're representing a lot of different businesses. They can do one big bulk buy.
Perfect. Thank you. That was it.
All right, beautiful. I think you're you're clear. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Bernstein, seconded by Mayor Protem. Okay, now, are we looking for a staff report on one Z? Yeah, staff report on one Z, please.
Well, good evening, Mayor DeHart and Mayor Protem Soto and council members. Andy Mills, Police Chief, and hope to answer some of the questions that came to us today that, and I appreciate the diligence with what you're looking at this system for. So if I can just explain the overall product that we're trying to purchase, and so the community as well as council can understand it in detail, and then answer any questions you might have. At this point in our nation's juncture, it's important for us to be as safe as possible by using information to intercept and receive threats as they come. In addition to that, we want to continue to solve crime problems and specific crimes that take place as rapidly as possible. It alleviates stress on the victims as well as enables us to be more effective in our prosecution because as time goes by, evidence disappears. And so for us to do to identify suspects and intervene as quickly as possible, it's critical that we're able to do that. So enter Flock Nova. Flock Nova is an operating system. It is not additional surveillance equipment. It is an operating system that allows us to take the existing equipment that was already approved and has contracts with, combine it with data in order for us to be as as quick as possible in identifying suspects. So for instance, if there is a shooting on the south end of town and a person flees the scene, we have a general description. We can run that car in the in the Flock system and start developing information that allows us to start now identifying who the suspect might be. What it does is combines databases in four areas. The first one is technology. So we can leverage the drone technology that's already in place. We can leverage the Flock license plate readers as well as Flock cameras. Then the second thing it does, it leverages the publicly available criminal justice data. So we cannot go into CGIS, which is Criminal Justice Information Center, nor can we use the NCIC, National Criminal Justice Information Center, because that's a wholly different protected level. What it allows us to do is use publicly available information and then use that to start to identify vehicles that, for instance, might have been involved in this crime. The third one is we can use data mining. We have a program called First Two that allows us to use phone numbers, use identities of people to search people who might fit that fit that identity. And then the last area is open source data. We can go into anything that's open to the general public, pull that into one location. So what would have taken us minimally hours, normally days, to accomplish, we'll have it at our fingertips, and hopefully we can use that information to identify people within minutes. So this changes the the ballgame completely and allowing us to identify people as rapidly as possible so that gives us the opportunity to find that person, stop them, and get them in custody. It's been used successfully, even in the limited way that we've had so far. Around the nation, it's been used to to identify crimes, very high crimes in other cities, but even locally here. The same technology allowed us to intervene in a kid that, as you're probably well aware, that had a BB gun in a park. And the drone technology was piped into the, even though we don't have the real-time crime center up and running yet, but it was, we were able to use it on laptops and to identify that it was not a real firearm, it was a BB gun. We had a kidnapping from the LA area that wound up in the northern part of our city, and because of the same technology, we were able to retrieve and and rescue the child. We've had multiple violent crimes, including a couple of murders, that we used, we're able to use the technology to identify people, pin down timeframes, allowing us to get search warrants, to execute those search warrants, and gather critical pieces of evidence. So the difference is, this will all be pumped to one location, and that'll be the real-time crime center that will have also other cities, local cities, involved in that same location so that, because criminals don't see jurisdictional boundaries. We're the only ones that do. And so we'll be able to use that information to to protect our our community. Equally is important, and I hear you very clearly, council members, equally as important are civil rights. That we want to protect people's civil rights, and we also want to protect our our city and to make sure that there's no potential for abuse. As we talked about last time, as council put into place the last time, it is very clear, our data cannot be shared with the federal government, period. But let me give you one caveat. If there's a terrorist event, I'm going to share it. For instance, the IVF clinic bombing that took place, we immediately had a license plate. We ran that license plate. We started checking our cameras in our Flock system, and I shared that with the FBI. I have the authority to do that according to our policy and according to what was put in place. I will leave no stone unturned to protect this community. And so in those rare, very rare circumstances, one time so far, that we are sharing it with our federal partners, it cannot and will not ever go to ICE for the purposes of immigration enforcement. We are going to protect that at all costs. In order for anybody else to read our data, our license plate, our images, anything, we have to permit them access into our system in order to be able to do that. And of course, then the the third thing that we, you know, are very concerned about is what can the third-party company Flock do with our data? And the answer is, we have to give them permission to see our data and to use our data. And we audit it on a regular basis. We audit it in two ways. One, this is one of the audits, we audit it to see how our people are using it. They have to have a two-factor authentication in order to use the Flock system. First one is they have to have a crime case number to put into the system so that they can access it. And the second is they have to give an explanation. So you just can't make up some random case and put it in the system and then and then access it. You have to be able to explain why. And it can be just a short sentence, but we want to go back, and we audit it every week. The second thing that we can audit, and we do so regularly, and I have to give a lot of credit to Lieutenant Hutchinson on this, he goes through and audits anybody else that's having access to our data. So other police agencies in the state of California can have access to our data if we have an agreement with them, and the agreement states they cannot share it with other parties. It can only go to them. There's an MOU with each of these agencies. It's standard, but it's it's in place. He audits those agencies and and has actually called those agencies when it's not robust enough. One agency put in a pretty, we felt, light explanation of why they needed the data, and he called them up and talked to them about it and was satisfied with their explanation of why they were accessing our data. So we're, we take this very seriously. We think it's extremely important, and 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 we're going from there. Flock can use the data in one area, and that is to, after it is anonymized, in other words, they can't make heads or tails of it, they use it for machine learning to be able to improve the system. And I can give you an example. Sometimes we get false reads on the license plates. If the license plate is one, you know, Adam, William, Victor, 123, it'll come out as one WWW. And and so the machine learning will help correct that as they get feedback from this anonymized data. So no identities are possible. That's the only access that they have to this data, and they have to have our permission to do that. So we feel it's a pretty protected system. But the questions you brought up made us to actually, as a team, pause and think today, that's why I have the team here with me, to stop and think about, okay, do we need different policy to put in place? Because this is not a surveillance system, it's a data collection investigative system. So because of the very nuanced difference, we started working on our own policy to make sure that that data is protected as well as the agreements that we already have in place with with Flock. And and we feel pretty pretty strongly about that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and concerns. I get it that that's important to our community, and we we want you to know that each of us takes takes this very seriously also.
Thank you so much, Chief. That was really helpful. I do want to just flag for the city manager as well. I do think when we have items like this one, I don't think they should go on consent. I think there should be opportunity already for a larger discussion, just because I think it's really important for the community to be aware of all of this. It's important, and it's important that people understand how it all works. And I think just the explanation you just gave was was extremely helpful, and and I think anyone watching is probably appreciative of that. I do still have a couple of questions. You talked about these MOUs with other agencies and that they have to request and that those MOUs are strong. What happens, though, I'm at a different agency, I I get permission to look at this data, I pull it up. How do we prevent that that's that I'm not printing it out or writing it down and then sharing it with somebody else? You know, what are what are the kinds of things that you look at when you're entering into these MOUs with other agencies to kind of combat that? Obviously, it's not, it's not foolproof, and I, but I do want to kind of understand your your thinking in how you you enter these.
Sure. And that's, that's a very, that's a very important question. On the original question about putting on the consent calendar, we will take responsibility for that. Anything that could be potentially controversial, I will make sure that it gets on the agenda rather than consent. That's that's on us.
Thank you.
So a couple of things go into our our thinking on this. One is, we want to make sure that these departments that we're working with have a reputation that they're honest honest characters. Now, mistakes can happen in some of these agencies. I'm not, just because they've made a mistake someplace in their past, we're not going to lessen our ability because they made a mistake. Now, if there's a pattern or practice where they are working with ICE, or they're stating that they are going to work with ICE, they're out of our system. The law is very clear in the state of California, SB 54, that we cannot work with ICE on any immigration enforcement. If you're on a task force, you can, but that's a whole different animal. You're looking at murders and things like that. The other thing I want you to to be aware of, one of the, for instance, one of the good judgments that Lieutenant Hutchinson had is, there are federal agents on some of the intelligence collection fusion centers, and we would have, we could have an agreement with them where they could see our data, but that's one of the agencies we said, no, we're not going to share with some of those centers as long as there's federal agents there, including Homeland Security and ICE. And so we've purposely withdrawn the ability for those folks to see it. Could somebody print it and share it and text people? Yes, they could. Now, that would have to be disclosed in a report. It should be disclosed in a report if you're following the law. But and if we saw that, then I would revoke their privileges immediately for having shared that information. So there's a consequence to it. And then mostly the audit that we use, if the same agencies that would consistently not put in enough information are the same agencies that are going to cheat. not put in enough information are the same agencies that are going to cheat. And so, that's why we're doing that external audit, to make sure that we're seeing who's being faithful and diligent and having high integrity, and those that don't. And those that don't, they're going to get removed.
That makes sense. And I just want to kind of go over that initial part that you discussed about how FLOC NOVA works. So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it properly. So, a crime is committed, you're able to grab a license plate, you're putting that in the system, and then you can say, okay, this license plate belongs to John Doe, now you can pull all of the, any of it, publicly available criminal data on that person, which would mean, what types of data is that? Because you specified that there's other systems that you would have to have an extra layer of protection to get into. So, what is this, what are typically publicly available criminal data? What does that look like?
Well, it's two levels. One is the stuff that you can just Google on people and get into the systems where, you know, you can find out if, you know, Andy Bells has been convicted of any offense, or Megan's Law, for instance, if the 290 registrant. But the other side is, we also can get into our own data. So, we can get into our own records management system, as well as our own computer-aided dispatch system, and run names, which we do every day now. The real difference here is, I think Lieutenant Hutchinson counted, we have 50 different databases in the police department that we use. We're going to take probably initially the top six or seven, use those first, and make sure that we're doing this well and correctly, and then go from there. So, those are systems like CAD, RMS, first two. I'm struggling here, Hutch, help me with the others that we might have.
There's many.
Okay, jail management, there's a bunch of those that we can use that allow us to do that.
So, then, it's making it all a lot faster and easier, so, and especially when you're talking about open-source data, that's like someone's social media. So, if I have a, or no, because if it's public.
If it's public.
If it's public, that's what I mean, if it's public.
Right.
So, any public social media could be pooled, anything, like you said, on Google that could come up. So, if you Google my name, you get all sorts of campaign stuff, you get news articles, all of that would be publicly available to go into the system.
That's correct.
Okay. And that's something that you would do anyway if you had somebody's name and you were searching for them, except obviously, it would take a lot more time, because then you have to have one of your officers actually punch in their names and search through the many, many screens that come up.
That is 100% correct. So, we're going to do all of these things anyway.
Right.
Especially on a real serious crime, and it just takes, again, it could take days for us to get that done.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief, I really appreciate that explanation, the clarification as to how this contract relates to the previous one, and really, all the work a couple of years ago that was done by the previous council and Palm Springs Police Leadership on making sure that the FLOC policy is really reflective of our values and how we approach both public safety and privacy concerns. I guess my question is specifically in a couple sections in the contract, that I'm trying to understand how they're aligned with that policy that you all have worked so closely and so intensely to make sure is kind of department norms. So, 4-1, 4-2, and 4-3, so that's page 24, which outlines the data use and licensing. The default is in each of these, which is customer data, customer-generated data, and anonymized data, is that FLOC does have, can access it, and it doesn't acknowledge there's an MOU, or that it has to be through, you know, clear authority and allowance by the city. So, how do we make sure that the overall FLOC policy is reflective in kind of this section of the contract, or do you think that's something that maybe is not necessary?
Well, it's always necessary, and that was the whole point of last time with Council Member Holstich, and Council Member Gardner, and Council Member Bernstein, I think everybody had a little bit of a piece of this. What this is specifically referring to is that anonymized data, where they can use it to improve the system. They still do not have the right to access, share, give, sell, anything of our data to anybody else, based on what I read here. Now, I'm not a legal scholar, and maybe the city attorney can weigh in, but I don't believe they have the ability to do that.
Correct. This is an amendment to the original, the previous FLOC agreement, and as part of that prior FLOC agreement, we specifically stated in the agreement that that agreement is subject to the city's privacy policies that are in the city police department's code of policies. So, this amendment will also be subject to that same provision. If the council would like us to reiterate that in the amendment, I suspect FLOC would be okay with that, because they were okay with us putting it in the original agreement.
Yeah, I definitely would, and if it's possible, and I'd be open or receptive to your feedback, city manager, is it possible then to strike some of the parts where it says, you know, customer here by grants FLOC, limited, non-exclusive, royalty-free license to use the customer data and perform all acts as necessary? Like, it just has language that does not reflect that original agreement.
That does sound broad, but it would be interpreted to mean, subject to those other provisions in the agreement, including abiding by our city police policies.
If we can look at 4-1, 4-2, and 4-3 on making that clear, that would be excellent. And then, another section as well would be 5-3, which is disclosure of footage, and then it's subject to the retention policy of the department, which I've been told is 30 days. But it says, "FLOC may access, use, preserve, and/or disclose the footage to law enforcement agencies, government officials, and/or third parties if legally required to do so, or if FLOC has good faith belief that such access is necessary." And so, again, it faults, for me personally, it feels a bit more discretion on FLOC, as opposed to the authority is on police leadership to make that case.
We'll look at that as well.
If you can make those, then I'd feel comfortable, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Bernstein?
Yeah, I just, I want to second that. When we, anytime that we do any other contracts with FLOC or any on council items, we should have that original agreement and policies in there, and I would ask probably that we put it in the record for this as well, so that it never seems as though that gets forgotten. Because we did spend a lot of time on it, and it did reflect the values of the council and the community while also serving the purpose of the police. And so, that way it doesn't get lost, and we have our police policies, which probably may not be appropriate for this, but certainly the ones with FLOC should be in the agreement and in any future council agenda items.
Interested.
But, you know, I am interested, I mean, in this, seeing this in action. I mean, obviously, we're now living in a world where the bad guys have a lot of access, you know, and are able to do things, and we've seen some, you know, even with the bombing here, but, you know, throughout the country and the world, and so, whatever we can do to keep our residents safe, I think we need to do, so long as we keep that privacy. So, thank you, and thank you for the team for this.
Anything else?
Just one more thing. I really appreciate, Chief, you, and all of your officers, and taking the time to really go through this, and to listen to the concerns, like, and all of the time that you took last time as well. And we really went through with a fine-tooth comb last time, and I'll give lots of credit to Councilmember Holstich for when she was here and did that. But I do think that this is really important, and all of this new technology is scary for a lot of people. It's scary for me personally to see how quickly we can access this. Your AI conference, Councilmember Bernstein terrifies me. So, I really think it's important that we're just giving the public an opportunity to really understand, explaining in plain language, and as my colleague said, making sure that all of that information is here every single time, so that it's not, no one ever thinks that we're trying to hide something from them. And I appreciate the audits that are being done, and just the attention and care that's given to this community by yourself and your officers, so thank you very much.
You know, last time, when we went through this, we had a community meeting where we asked people to come in, a small handful of people came, but it still was open to the community. So, I'll give direction to my team right now, that if we're going to go to a new significant system such as this, to have a community meeting, so it's at least out there, people have the opportunity to ask questions and maybe alleviate their concerns.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Bernstein.
Declare that we add in the other, the original agreement into this for the record and referenced in this update, and we approve it.
The city's policies, as well as those two provisions that Mayor Protem Soto indicated, yes.
Yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Ready. All right, thank you. Next, we have, let's see, some comments. One I.
That's me. Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight for folks, our library trustees put out their annual report, I just wanted to show a few stats. It's, there was a 12% increase in public computer sessions since last year, a 23% increase in physical and digital items that were borrowed, 136,000-plus visits to the library, over 244,000 materials checked out. I mean, there's, it's really encouraged people to look at this, it's all just in the last year, including 2,861 new library cards issued. So, just really awesome to see in our library, it is very well-used, and just really appreciate the work that the librarians do to make this such a wonderful space for our community. Thank you so much.
A comment on item 1K, Mayor Protem.
Similar, kudos to the library. The estate of Frederick Van Hoof has given $33,000 to the Palm Springs Public Library Trust Fund, and I just wanted to, from the public dais, just express gratitude, and we're grateful for every bit of support, and the idea that a man and a family went through the work of adding it to their estate is an incredible honor, and so, just a bit of gratitude there.
Yes, Councilmember Gardner.
I had a comment on that same thing, it's just really amazing, and our foundation can help you if you also want to make an estate gift to the library. I did try to find out more information about Frederick Van Hoof, I could not find anything, yeah, other than he passed away a couple of years ago, but he did give to not only Palm Springs Library, but the Rancho Mirage Library, the Seattle Library, and to KCTS Public Television in Seattle. Sounds like a really all-around good guy, so thank you to his family if they're listening anywhere.
All right, next we do have item BB, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, didn't we miss one?
No, go ahead.
Okay. This is just a quick comment, just how important these investments, since this is a 10-year lease for cardiac equipment and mechanical CPR devices for the fire department, and we talk a lot about really shiny things sometimes, new buildings, and new fire trucks, and all of those are so important, but sometimes it's the most basic, up-to-date equipment that is life-saving, and so, I just really wanted to say thank you to the fire department for bringing that forward, and I'm so grateful for staff for making sure we're staying up to date with the most current equipment that we can for our residents and tourists.
Thank you. Item, comments on 1R, Councilmember Ready.
So, this is the traffic light at Via Esquela in Indian Canyon, that there's been a lot of accidents at that traffic light and that area, the community has really requested and demanded this. I see in the staff report, it says, "It'll be completed in 90 working days from the issuance of notice to proceed." I assume that issuance happens right after this meeting? Is that correct?
Good evening, council.
I'm sorry, there was a question.
What's that?
I thought it was already answered, but okay.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Joel Montalvo, city engineer. So, what we do is, once we get approval, we get all the contracts signed, the contracts take maybe three, four weeks to come in, maybe a month. After that, we issue the notice to proceed, and then the traffic signal equipment, which is a very long lead item, gets ordered, we're looking at about 18 to 25 weeks. We do a lot of pre-prep work during the ordering of that equipment, and then the clock sort of stops until the equipment arrives for installation.
Yeah, you explain this to me, because it says it'll be completed within 90 working days, but we're actually talking...
Well, the working days is the contractual obligation of the contractor to perform the work during the 90 working days. We could technically stop the project or stop the working days and let time elapse without any working days, so...
And this is based upon, sorry?
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, how long it takes to get the actual equipment?
Absolutely, it definitely is. We only have about three to four foundries in the entire United States who actually manufacture traffic signal poles, and it is very, it takes a long time to actually get them.
So, what I meant to just have a comment, because you did explain this to me, is that anything we can do to speed up this process, that to get the equipment faster would be greatly appreciated by the residents and Councilmember Gardner and I, I know. So, that was my comment mainly.
Owe it.
Okay, any other comment? Beautiful. I think we made it through the list, didn't we? Did we get everything everybody was looking for? All right, sweet. Next, we've got public hearing on item 2A, which is consider the adoption of increases to and establishing user and regulatory fees for various city regulatory activities, programs, and services. I suspect we are going to get a big staff report.
Sure are.
All right.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. My name is Heather Kane, I'm the Assistant Director of Finance, and tonight, we're here for council to consider adopting the comprehensive fee schedule that you have before you. The city is required to conduct a fee study every five years, and after a competitive bidding process, Will Dan became our contractor to assist us with the process of the fee study. And they are here to offer a brief presentation. After the short presentation, we are happy to have questions from council. We also have all the department directors here, in case you have any questions, and they're happy to answer your questions as well. Staff has done quite a bit of work on this fee schedule to do a lot of cleanup, as you can notice in attachment E with all the obsolete fees that were listed in there. There was also change of methodology in the building department, as well as parks and rec. And so, we feel that we've provided a very good product. Just today, I did receive notification from the Desert Valley Builders Association that they approved the fee schedule with no recommended changes. A few other changes I would like to bring to your attention that are not on the fee schedule that are before you, there are two of them. The first one means business license fees, where we are proposing that they remain unchanged for renewals and for new applications. The new applications will remain unchanged at $40, while renewals will remain unchanged at $27. The second line item would be the domestic partnership registration, and those are located on your staff report, page 17. Staff is proposing full cost recovery of $35 for registration and termination, rather than the $197 you have before you. So, if approved, these changes will be reflected in the final publication upon council's pleasure of adoption. I also wanted to note that you will notice some fees have increased significantly. These larger increases are a result of a few factors, that include, but not limited to, nationwide inflationary increases, but most importantly, significant increases to personnel costs, that includes salaries and benefits. The last time the fee study was conducted was about six years ago, and salaries have increased by a significant amount since that time. Those salary and benefit increases directly contribute to the proposed fee and the full request of full cost recovery. While I was not with the city when the last fee study was conducted, there is a possibility that any fees that were subsidized six years ago, and those subsidies could affect the larger increases as well. Additionally, Will Dan has recommended full cost recovery to keep up with the pace of costs associated with the services being provided. So, with all that said, I'm happy to turn it over to Mike and Nick from Will Dan for a short presentation, and then afterwards, we can turn it over for you folks for any questions you may have.
We want a presentation, everybody? Oh, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mike Medvee with WillDan. I also have Nick Citrine with me, and together with so much help from the city department heads and the employees, we were able to put together this user fee study, and I'll talk a little bit about it right now. So user fees are fees for services that the city charges for services they provide that are mostly private, individual benefit to a single person or a single group. To be a fee and to fall under this category, it must be voluntary use, and the fee that we, the fees that we establish need to be reasonably related to the cost of the service. These are adopted by city council. There is a public hearing, which we have right now, but there's no ballot procedure, and that's a result of the fact that it's a fee and not a tax or an assessment. The, this is one of the main ways that cities can increase revenues to the general fund. There's just not a lot of options there, and the reason we're able to do this, because it is a cost recovery exercise. When we put it together, we calculate the full cost using fully burdened hourly rates. That's the salaries and benefits plus departmental overhead plus central overhead to achieve those dollar amounts that you see in the fully burdened hourly rate worksheet. We have been, worked very closely with city staff to identify any fees that need to be changed, added, removed, or, or changes in methodology to make sure that we achieve the best cost recovery. And those cost recovery goals, again, are mainly come from staff with our help in calculating them and establishing a good methodology consistent with the laws. Before completing the fee study, we did a cost allocation plan, and the purpose of this is to take the central, central overhead costs, this would be the, the council, city manager, finance, the departments that don't interact directly with the public, and allocate those to the operational departments that do interact with the public. This was done consistent with industry standards, with the law, and in a, in a reasonably, reasonable way to represent how the cost allocates to each of the departments. And this was critical in developing the personnel rates for the budgeting of the costs related to the fees. You can see a cost, a summary of the cost allocation plan below. If you average it over the entire city budget, it's about 10% rate for each department. This shows the steps that we went through to, to develop the study. After approving the cost allocation plan, we developed the model itself. We met with staff and put together the cost analysis, developed the methodology. After calculating the fees, we met with staff, met with staff to set cost recovery goals. As, as mentioned, we do recommend full cost recovery as much as possible, and I think that was achieved here. This is a pretty good fee levels that we have to help offset costs. We created the report, which is in your agenda, and then that public hearing, the last step, is what we're doing right now. In general, the, the whole purpose of setting these fees is that if we don't increase the fees, then the general fund has to subsidize services that really only benefit one person or one small group or one corporation. By setting these fees at cost recovery, we're freeing up general fund money to do things that benefit the general public, which is what we recommended it before. In certain situations, we do, we do subsidize fees as a, as a public policy tool, encourage participation, ensure compliance, so that would be for code enforcement-type activities, or anytime the cost is prohibitive to residents. And we also want to promote access to things like health and welfare, parks and recreation, those kinds of activities. But we also recommend with these fees that on an annual basis, they be adjusted by an inflation factor. Generally, this is consumer price index, construction cost index, but it, you know, it can be really any number of, any number of ways to increase them year over year to keep up with, with inflation, with cost inflation. And then we also recommend, and it's generally recommended by California Code as well, that the analysis itself be updated every five years. Of course, as Heather mentioned, there's been a lot of inflation recently, and the landscape for hiring public employees has also gotten more competitive. So that's the reason, the main reason that we're here today, and the main reason that we've done a lot of these studies recently. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have Nick here, and then, and Heather.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Before we start with the questions, I just want to thank the staff. You know, this has been a fairly long project. We had a little hiccup, and what has been, the, the output is, is really good work. So I appreciate, you know, the, the energy and effort and the, the support that we got from WillDan. Thank you for doing that, and I think you can see the time, energy, and effort in, in this work product. So thank you. Questions, concerns, or discussion? Yes, go ahead.
I think we do have to open a public hearing after that.
Oh, are we?
It is a public hearing.
Are there questions of staff?
Yeah, I do have some questions of staff first. So for, they're under fire and emergency. It talks about FBR hourly rates, and then it says master bail schedule. I wasn't sure where to find the master bail schedule. It's on page 16, if you're just looking at the, the fee schedule for my colleagues is on page 32 of the larger document.
Can you tell me one more time which line item?
It's page 16. Wait. Now I'm, now my pages are getting confused, sorry. It's page, yeah, page 16. It is page 16 of your document.
32 of the staff report.
Yes, page 32 of the staff report, thank you. Yeah, it says false, sorry, for false alarms under fire department. It says FBR hourly, and then it says see master bail schedule. I wasn't clear where that master bail schedule was, and I was just curious, you know, what, what is that hourly rate for fire if there is a, a false alarm, and if there could just be a little explanation of what that means?
Sure. So I think I'll ask Chief to come up and maybe speak to that, if you can.
And, and Chief, just so you know, actually, a couple of my questions are related to fire fees.
Yeah, if you have some, yeah.
And the reason I bring this up, just for the public, is that there are some false alarms that happen, and there is supposed to be some sort of fee charge. Basically, we don't need someone's alarms to be constantly malfunctioning and having our officers go out. So if you could just give some clarity on kind of what the hourly rate is, and...
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, Paul Alvarado, Fire Chief. So we do, we've broken out our position schedules, and those are line items 195 through 210. So we do, we do cost that out per hour, so anywhere from $273 an hour from a deputy fire chief, all the way down to $123 for a fire prevention specialist. But I will state that it is very rare that we do charge that for false alarms, and in large part because we do such a good job with our community risk reduction, going out, ensuring that our fire alarms are working correctly, working with our businesses. We go out there annually, typically, make sure that they're all up to speed, and we don't have issues. So very rare that this department would charge that. We tend to educate, provide assistance, ensure the system's working properly before we start any type of fee like that.
Thank you very much. And then the other question I had that's under fire department, it's on page 23 of the fee schedule, or page 39 of the staff report. It says parade floats, and it says there's inspection fees. They went from $142 to $1,218. I, I'm not actually questioning the, the increase in cost, but I, but I do want to understand, what is it, who needs these parade float inspections, so that the public knows? And, you know, we have a lot of parades. I just want to understand who bears that cost, because I do want people to know that it's increased quite a bit.
Absolutely, and, and they are done, because there are parades where we do have floats in the city. But with me is Fire Marshal Taylor Tople, and we actually talked about this today. If I could have you come on up and just explain how we do charge that?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Taylor Tople Fire Marshal. So very rarely do we charge those. It's a fee that got missed that we forgot to take out. We normally charge the, the event or the parade our hourly rate.
Okay, so...
It doesn't go to the, the float itself.
Okay, so we're not going to have our Palm Springs High School calling us and saying, why do we have to pay thousands of dollars in fees?
Absolutely not.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
But could you explain that again? So, so what, you don't charge this fee?
So we don't charge this fee, sir. We, what we do is, we charge the special event. Anything that is not a city-sponsored event or comes out of a city account, we charge it to, for instance, prior, we charge our hourly rate for those float inspections. We don't bill each participant individually.
So we should not have this fee, then?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we can strike this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But do we then need to have the event organizer float per hourly fee?
If I might, could I get, just clarify, the fee is being charged, but to the event organizer, not to the individual nonprofit. So the fee does need to remain if we're going to collect it.
That, that's not correct. So the hourly rate of the inspector or plans examiner performing the inspection on that day is being charged to the event, not per individual.
You're not charging $1,218 per float to the event organizer?
Exactly, correct.
So that hourly rate of between $123 to $273 is charged. So if in an hour, you're able to inspect six floats?
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, okay. So, yeah, if we can just get clarification of, just edit that, however, it needs to be edited to properly reflect. And I, I do want to say just kudos to this new fee schedule. It is a lot easier to understand, and I know that each department went through and, and struck out things and clarified things, and it really is much easier to, to follow now. So thank you very much. And...
Can we get, is, can we do other fire questions?
Yes, I was just going to say, I think I'm done with fire, so please go ahead.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you've mentioned that you don't charge for false alarms, but on this line, you also say fire and emergency responses per hour. So do you, if there's somebody who has a fire in their house, you charge a per hourly fee?
Councilmember Bernstein, could you reference which line you're looking at?
Page 16 of the, 32 of the staff report, 16 of the document.
So without finding it here, because I know our, our pages are numbered differently.
It'd be 16 in your, in the actual document.
Also, still under, so looking at fire and emergency responses. Yeah, so we do not charge for fire and emergency responses. If we go out on an EMS call or a structured fire response within the city, we do not charge residents or visitors or businesses for emergency responses. There is no billing. A lot of these fees that were itemized within this, the fee study, there were numbers put to a, a service, but it isn't the practice of the Palm Springs Fire Department to charge for many of these fees that were actually put in this. So for, for certain, for that, for emergency responses, we're not charging for that.
Should it be in here, or?
If it's in here, you have to charge it, so we should remove it.
If it's in here, do you have to charge it?
Yes.
I don't know who to ask this to.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Rich Wall with Best of St. Griger. I'm, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, sorry. So just to clarify, so the fee schedule that you're adopting today sets the maximum rates that you can charge for any service that is applicable in that schedule. However, it is, you're not obligated to charge those fees, and in fact, you may charge less than those fees if there was a policy that would require or facilitate that. But you're essentially just establishing the maximum amount of fees, but there's no obligation to, to then charge them.
But this is a policy now the department can set, not a council-setting department policy.
Maybe just a small clarification. I know this tends to happen as we're, as we're adding and removing fees and, and line items. The, the grayed-out portion on, on row eight says false alarms, and then below it, it says fire and emergency responses. So the way I would interpret this is, the category is false alarms, and then there's one single line item below that says fire and emergency responses. That's only in the case of false alarms, is the way that I interpret that, that they would charge the fully burdened hourly rates.
Okay, and that makes sense, then, to have at the discretion of the fire department, because if it's somebody who has one false alarm, you're not going to charge them. If it's someone who has a alarm going off every week, then you have the right to charge them.
Could I ask where the policy is on that? What is our actual policy? When do you and when do you not charge for false alarms? I know police have a very set policy. Do this fire? We do not have a policy in the fire department of charging for false alarms. So should we remove this?
Or should you come up with a policy?
You know, I don't see a need for it now. There hasn't been a need for it. There aren't occupancies that we are continuously going to. In, in various cities with large commercial or residential high-rise hospitals, typically, you'll see multiple false alarms where that could be implemented. In my time here, I haven't seen it, and I haven't seen that need brought to my attention. Like, what would you even classify as a false alarm? A, a, maybe someone that, that, you know, burned something in the kitchen and set off a smoke detector. That would typically be what we see here in the city. A malfunctioning fire alarm system due to a mechanical failure, a system failure, is typically what we see in other cities, where cities will start charging for that.
Yeah. A burglar alarm is more common to have a false alarm.
To clarify, the city does have a false alarm ordinance on the books. Now, whether staff is implementing that or not is a different question, and so that's probably why this fee is before you, is because we have an ordinance that allows the city to impose fees for multiple or repeated false alarms.
Does it include fire?
I believe so, yes.
The police is very strict. I've seen it, you know, first time is this, and if you have it again, it's significantly more. Okay. I guess the overall question, though, because the fire fees have increased very significantly in a lot of categories, sometimes hun, you know, hundreds of percentage points, more so than other departments. Was this particularly low before? Your costs particularly rise overall? I know it's perhaps to reflect true costs.
You know, we looked at, and thank you for the questions, too, that were brought to our attention from a couple of councilmembers. It made us took a, take another look at the way the data was entered, and many of these were, the data was entered incorrectly. What we provided was different ranks of personnel that may be addressing, whether it was a building inspection or doing a fire plans examination, we provided different ranks. What ended up happening through the data analysis was, all the ranks were tallied together for one total cost, and it should really be one individual person. But we did provide different hourly rates on, depending on who was doing that work. So for example, you could take the film permit standby, four-hour minimum per person on line 39. There was proposed fee of $1,949, and they were charging for four people, four hours, for that job. In reality, that's a one person for four hours. We're recommending that fee be lower to $830.
Is that other fees as well, that, so, should we recommend this comes back to another meeting?
Well, I was speaking with Finance today. We've submitted a new report with these corrections today, that I do recommend being updated, for the Fire section anyways.
Because it still says that the film permit is $1,949.
That is correct. And today, those corrections were made on a separate spreadsheet that we sent to the Finance team, to have them take a look at it.
What about Line 38?
We're not approving these tonight, then?
We're supposed to.
We get the correct ones?
Chief, is the same, but there's the same scenario hold true on Line 38. The special event fire charge was $1,98. Now, it's listed at $1,949. I'm assuming that's, is that four people, four hours?
I would assume that is the same way. Yes, I would assume that's the same way, Mayor. You know, brought to our attention were numerous building inspections that were calculated the same way. So, we've gone through, we've made the corrections, and I do recommend that those be updated before adopting this for the Fire Department anyways.
How do we do that?
Well, I think if there's other issues in here as well that need to be updated, I mean, we obviously can't approve what we don't have before us.
Yeah, okay. Is there another...
Can we approve all the other departments except Fire?
Yes, or Fire can identify for the Council what the numbers are.
Your colleague is talking, I think.
What I might suggest is, let's move on to a different department. And while they're doing that, I'd like them to go through the list, and we'll come back to them at the end of the questioning, and see if we have a better idea of what we're talking about. Because if we can eliminate those, change those, reduce those, and resolve it tonight, I think that would be preferable.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Or if there's a copy of the list that we could get ahold of, might be easier for us to review it. Okay, Councilmember Garner, you want to start us on a fresh round?
Yeah, thank you. I did have some questions about library room rentals, which I talked a bit to the City Manager about, because I'm, what I want some clarity on is, what belongs in the Fee Schedule versus what can just be done as policy? So, the, again, sorry, Page 27 of the Fee Schedule, Page 43 in the Staff Report, we have our new Fee Schedule for when the new library opens. And we're gonna have a lot more spaces, including small meeting rooms. However, one of the things that I've noticed at the library in general is that we have some larger rooms that are not necessarily always used during the day, and I'm interested in, especially when we have our new library open, being able to open up these spaces when they're not in use. For instance, after high school gets out, you get a lot of teens that go over, perhaps there's a group of them that want to study. They don't fit in one of the study rooms. One of our larger spaces is available. Can we let those kids go in and study in that room without charging them the half rate? You know, so I just kind of want to understand, what do we need to discuss now versus what we can just discuss at a later time with Jeannie in terms of, like, library policy for the future library?
Hey, it's Library Director. Thank you. Good question. That's a policy issue, and that is something that we would completely address on a case-by-case basis. If it was specifically a teen program, and if it's a library-sponsored event, of course, we would find the appropriate room for them.
Thank you. And then, one of the things I did notice, too, in the library part, it said no discount for nonprofits. And so, just wanted to find out why there would be no discount for nonprofits.
Oh, are you talking about Line 29?
Yes.
That is an after-hours rental.
Okay, so it's just there's no discount for nonprofits after hours?
Right, because we have to, we have to bring in staff, and overtime, and security, and it's a huge expense.
Okay, great. And these proposed fees, too, for these, even for this, they're not crazy. They're very reasonable, I think. I just want to flag for Council that I do want to, at some point, have a discussion about how we use the new library and the spaces. So, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have to do that now. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Does anybody else have something on the library?
Yep, Councilmember Bernstein.
I actually have a quick question, maybe better for the City Manager on this, because we have the room rental fees here. Can we look at developing a master website of all the spaces and rooms that you can rent at the city and the cost? Because I know the school district does this, and it's very easy to use. And we have residents who are looking for spaces sometimes, and it's very hard for them to find out what is potentially available, how much it costs, and how can they actually reserve it. I know we can go to each department, but it might be a little bit difficult if they have the library and the parks and rec and city buildings, others. Is that possible?
Yeah, Councilman, and we talked briefly about it this afternoon. I think it's, we can absolutely do that. We have people, the same as you, ask us all the time about what facilities they can rent, where they can rent, how they can get space. I think it should be fairly easy for us to pull out rental facilities out of the Fee Schedule, put it in one place, engage Palm Springs or somewhere, and say, "You'd like to rent a facility. You need space. Here's where you go. Here's what the rates are."
And how many it fits?
How many it fits?
Dispects, all dispects.
And if you look at the school district, they have a very good one. It's pretty good. But I think would actually be an investment, a worthwhile investment to develop something, because it would be able to recoup a lot more usage fees if people knew how to find them, or what was available. So, that was my comment, my question, if we could do that, not a comment.
Mayor Protem, you have library?
Yeah, go ahead. Quick, I do have a question for Jeannie on the library, but just before I go back to that, around the facility use, there's indoor gathering spaces, it's really, really difficult. And so, if the city could be a leader and example on that, would be fantastic. And I would love for a good summary, as quick as possible, and a perfect summary. If it takes longer, we can build that out longer. But something as, anything would be fantastic to have sooner rather than later. Jeannie, for the library, though, can you share a little bit, I noticed that for research of more than 20 minutes, it was about 167% increase, whereas most of all the other services kind of remained flat. Can you talk through about kind of what goes into that, and why it's important that it is, why it's so important that it's the true cost of that service?
Right, thank you. Excellent question. We do have on our line item for fees and charges, we do have a research charge for greater than 20 minutes. Now, this is extraordinary research. This isn't our day-to-day reference questions that we help customers with every day, teaching them how to use our databases, getting them on the computers, things like that. This is outside the scope of our daily duties. This is special, special research. It's the type of research where you should hire a research assistant to do it for you and pay them the salary. And so, we have subsidized this number for decades, I would suspect. And so, this is the true salary and benefits charge for one of my librarians to work on research for someone. And I can attest that, and I asked my librarians, too, and we've been asked about this charge several times, a dozen, in a dozen years, and nobody's done it. But it's there so that we can, if people do decide that we should be their personal researcher. So, that, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was just a good example. I caught it, and your answer completely flipped my logic and assumption in my brain, is that even if no one is using it, saying what it costs is also helpful for people to understand, is it appropriate to use our city for?
And we're happy to help people with their reference, and teaching them how to use our services, and getting them started. And so, we're not opposed to helping people with research, but when it's extraordinary, we need a dollar amount assigned to it.
It's appropriate. Thank you. That was my only library.
Okay. Councilmember Ready, Fees, Library?
Yes, question. So, on same interlibrary loan, from $5 to $80, does that happen, I mean, that does happen often?
No, $80 is the actual cost, but we are still keeping the fee at $5.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you so much. That's so good to know. Thank you.
It's a simple duty, but it does take time.
And could I ask you, so, back to Councilmember Garner's question. So, do you have a discount rate for nonprofits for a room rental?
Yes, we do.
You do?
We do a 50% charge, 50% discount for nonprofits to rent our rooms. And then, when we reopen, we'll have three, four-person small study rooms, and one eight-person study room, and we will not be charging for those. So, those will be two-hour time block. You can use it at no charge.
Is that on here or a different place, or should we add it?
It's not on here yet at all, because the rooms don't exist.
So, you'll bring that back?
Yeah, well, there's no fee, so there would be no...
Oh, okay. Understood. Okay, thank you.
It's a, hopefully, that's okay.
All right, maybe this is the last library one. Printing fee per page. Our full cost is $7.71. How did we, how did we get there?
We have, we calculated the approximate time it takes for someone to assist a customer with their print release. So, they send their, submit their print job. They come to us. They say, "I would like to print on computer number three." We say, "Okay, that'll be 25 cents." We take the money, we ring it in, we get the printing. In the morning, we change the paper, we do the toner, and it costs about $7 to do, to charge someone a quarter for the printing.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. Just one more question on my end. Garage sale permits, Page 66 of the Staff Report, Page 50 of the Fee Schedule.
That's not me.
No. It's planning. It's under, yeah, it's under planning. Garage sale permits, the cost is the cost. I don't have any issue with that. But if someone can chat briefly about, I don't know what that backfeed is, when are you supposed to, how soon do you need a garage sale permit? Is anyone denied a garage sale permit? Just explain that a little bit, because I have a feeling that not many people come to the city and actually ask for garage sale permits.
Surprisingly, we process a high number of garage sale permits.
Oh, okay.
Now, are people not applying for them? I'm sure that that is happening. But we process them very quickly. It's almost an automated process. They submit through EPL. It's the 20-something dollars, and we turn it around almost same day. So, it's happening very quickly. We sort of talk about garage sale season, which we're heading into. It sort of coincides with the rest of the season, but certainly we see huge spikes around Modernism Week, both the Preview Week and Full Modernism Week. We get a whole host of them, community garage sales. We do process actually a surprisingly high number of them.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to highlight that for the public, because I don't think I've ever asked for a garage sale permit, since I haven't been in Palm Springs.
Any other planning fee questions? Yes, Councilmember Bernstein.
Yeah, Chris, can you answer, we've had this question before, about the portable sign in the right-of-way?
Yes.
What has changed in that, and where is it?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. And since I didn't say, I'm Chris Hadwin, Planning Director for the City of Palm Springs. So, there has been a lot of conversation about this. And so, prior to the pandemic, we were charging a fee, I believe it was under $200, for those portable or A-frame signs that you kind of see all throughout the city, but especially downtown, you know, in front of businesses advertising their businesses, specifically in those instances where there's no private property on which you can locate the signs. Of course, our downtown businesses are mostly built right out to the sidewalk, or the city right-of-way, and they don't have any private property on which they can put those signs. So, the purpose of the fee was really because there is an internal review between planning and engineering, to make sure that the sign is located appropriately, that it is ensuring a minimum amount of ADA accessibility on the sidewalk, that it's safe, and most importantly, that we're also entering into an indemnification agreement with those businesses, in case somebody trips over the sign. We don't want the city to be liable in those instances. We paused that program during the pandemic, and just through the escalation of the regular Fee Schedule that we'd had over the years, when we restarted the program, the fee ended up being somewhere around $450. And I know that businesses were very concerned about that additional cost being placed on them. So, long story short, that fee is now captured on, I'm sorry, one second, on Line 4 of the Planning Fee Schedule, which is on Page 63, under Planning Minor Incidental Review. And the fee is $188, which takes it closer to what it was prior to 2020. And again, that's a one-time fee that those businesses would pay only in the circumstances that I described. And we've been able to lower the fee just through operational efficiencies.
Okay, thank you. I know some of our businesses would be very happy, and I also spoke to our Economic Development Director, and we look at updating our facade improvement program. If this is part of a bigger improvement, they potentially could add that to that. Is that correct?
Good evening, Council, Wayne Olson. I'm the Chief Economic Development Officer for the city. Mayor and Council, yes, that's correct. If the application were to come in with a larger facade grant, application, we'd be happy to entertain that as a cost that we could reimburse.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do want to mention, when this first was instituted, I think I had the first one at my business, and then City Manager David Reddy came out, and I had to show him why we needed a sign in the public right-of-way, because it actually did not work in front of my business. So, I'm glad to see this coming. My general question, which I guess applies to other ones, when you charge hourly rates, does somebody know in advance how much time it's gonna take them?
Yeah, it's not that frequent. It actually only applies to a few of the actions that we have in our Fee Schedule, and they're really large projects. One of them is an annexation. Well, of course, we're very rarely processing a privately initiated annexation application. I'm not sure if we've ever done it in our history. It's certainly been a very long time. And so, the Fee Schedule does identify that that is done at an hourly rate. The other one is a specific plan. And again, it's not that common that we would do a privately initiated specific plan. It's a very lengthy, very time-consuming, very publicly engaged process. And so, that's the other one where we are using the hourly rates. So, they are very large projects, and it would be very clear upfront that that's how those are being billed.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, any other planning fee questions?
I just have a couple, well, actually, just one. I sent you a few earlier today, and I only have one remaining. On Page 63, there is about a 78% increase on accessory dwelling units. Can you share a little bit about which ones those apply to?
Yeah. And I understand ADUs are something that we're certainly prioritizing, both through commitments in the housing element, and just to sort of meet our housing objectives. So, I understand that that looks like a large number. It is categorizing the cost to staff, but some important clarifications on when this is charged. So, this applies to only those accessory dwelling units that we process in planning with an ADU permit, which means that it's not meeting sort of some other underlying zoning requirements. They tend to be sort of non-standard ADUs, for lack of a better term, that need some other level of review or relief. If you're just an ADU that complies with all of the underlying rules, you don't necessarily need to go through this process, and this fee wouldn't be charged. So, again, this is only charged in those instances where the ADU is sort of non-standard or non-compliant in some way, and requires a higher level of review by the Planning Department. In most instances, they're going straight to the Building Department and pulling permits.
And when you say non-standard, so that's the pre-approved designs? Are those out? Or what do you mean by non-standard?
It's a little bit different. We're still working on that. We hope to make progress on that in the coming months. It's more that the zoning code, maybe it's not meeting the right setback. Maybe it needs a little additional height. Maybe it doesn't meet the separation between the primary building and where the ADU is going because of different site constraints. So, it typically means it's not meeting some underlying requirement of the zoning code.
I understand that these are not typical, and all the other ones are going straight to building. I do think EDUs are, I guess I'll leave my comment for afterward. Just kidding. Okay.
Okay. Planning fees. Councilmember Ready?
Yeah, Chris, thank you. A couple of questions. You answered several, and I appreciate that earlier. Although, I was looking at, on Page 63 that you're there, Appeals, the Planning Commission, just the various different appeals, they're up significantly. Now, like 1,500, 1,400, 1,200. So, I get that that's actually probably the cost of it, but do we, are we concerned that that's just prohibitive for people, that keeps them from appealing things? Or maybe that's sort of the intent?
I certainly would, this exercise was done purely through the lens of ensuring that we were accurately capturing the staff time associated with these. And when we looked at it, we were certainly under capturing the staff time that goes into appeals. They are quite complicated. The types of projects that we are typically getting appeals on are quite complicated. There often is a SEQA review associated with it, and the appeals are often related to SEQA, or sort of blur- or sort of blurring to SEQA world. And so there's often, you know, coordination with SEQA consultants. They take quite a bit of time and coordination amongst multiple departments. And one recent one that I know that council heard, you know, that was three years of staff time dealing with just one appeal, and that is actually the lowest appeal fee that we have on the schedule that that one fell into. So certainly, I would say on the balance, this is reflective of the staff time that's being spent on these, but it's certainly a policy decision for council as to whether it's a disincentive or not.
And then also on line thirty, which is the next page, the agricultural facilities, I was just curious, does that include cannabis?
It does not. No, cannabis facilities would be charged separately. Yeah, this is a bit of an oddity, given how old our zoning code is. We do have rules in there that speak to agricultural facilities. I am not aware of when we have ever processed one, but it is an entitlement that is regulated in the zoning code, and so therefore, we have to have the fee in the fee schedule if someone wants to build a large date farm or something like that.
Okay, thank you. And then on page sixty-six, which is line eighty-four. So, so this is the in-loop parking fees, and you did provide some information for me on that. And I guess this is ultimately, or a council policy discussion maybe another time. But this in-loop parking fee, this is traditionally, the, the idea was obviously to, to raise money to build parking and acquire parking. This fee was never large enough to be able to build or acquire parking, but it was just large enough to disincentivize businesses, particularly small businesses, from coming in and filling vacant buildings. So that has been a, a problem, and I think it's time probably for us to look at that. Now, you're not changing it here, so I would just flag it for council at some point in the future. I think that's a policy discussion that we would need to have. And then, let's see, you answered the other questions I had.
But again, this is just setting the maximum.
Yes.
So we could, we, if there was a situation and economic development was trying to attract, you know, particular small businesses, this could be modified.
In, in theory, yes. And then finally, on page seventy, line one sixty-nine, that's yours, the technology surcharge. I, I wasn't clear on what this changes. It's going from a thousand for new construction value to a dollar nine? I just wasn't sure what that changes.
I think it's just not super clear in the way it's laid out here. It's going from one dollar per thousand in new construction to one dollar and nine cent in new construction.
Thank, thank you. And are you on page? Oh, no. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, where do we travel to next? Councilmember Gardner?
I'm done with my question.
Oh, my goodness.
Whoever someone else wants to go.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bernstein.
I guess I got Heather here, so I can ask. So can you explain again the business license fee, where that is and what's going to happen?
What department is this?
It's finance.
Finance?
Yeah, so on the finance page. So for business license, it was determined that is, it is in fact a business license tax. And so it is not subject to mitigation acts, so those are not included in the fee schedule. However, the fees that I indicated at the beginning of my presentation for a new application of forty dollars and renewal of twenty-seven, that was incorrectly removed. That is a fee, so we're wanting to bring it back.
That'll be in, we can add it back into this and?
Technically, the council doesn't need to take any action on that. It's, it's been adopted, so we're asking the council to not take any action on the previously adopted business license fee, and that'll just remain as it is today. And the final version of the fee schedule will include what is currently being charged for the business license fee today. So you didn't, you're not increasing it, decreasing it, or, or removing it. You're just leaving it as, as it is today.
Okay. And when we do a business permit, there's, there's a new, there's also a per-employee charge. That's not a fee? That's a?
That's the tax that Ms. Kane was referring to.
And where is that?
That's established in our ordinance, and because it was established pre Prop thirteen and pre Prop two eighteen, this council and previous councils have not changed it because it would require a vote of the people in order to change that. Because it is, that is a tax.
Okay. And where do we post that besides the municipal code?
So we have that on our finance page. So we posted the ordinance. We also created what we're calling a quick reference sheet. And so it outlines, you know, the top ten fees or taxes that are charged for these business licenses. There's a link to that on, on the finance website page.
Okay. It might be, I don't know how a business finds that, but it's the first time I knew about it, so where to find it. So, okay. I think that was it for the finance.
Anybody else have finance? Mayor Protem?
Yes. The, oh, let me just double-check. Maybe this is, there was event, let me just double-check. This is, the event permits of at least four vendors. I'm trying to see what page I had it. Yeah, of at least four vendors had an almost eight hundred percent increase.
You're in Parks and Rec?
It was finance.
That's page fifteen, or thirty-one of the staff.
I think for this temporary event permit, that would be on page thirty-one, line five and six.
Yes. Can you share a little bit about how often that fee has been billed in the last few years? And if you have any thoughts around kind of phasing that increase?
So for the past two years, we issued four permits per year. And so for this calculation, definitely at council's discretion, you're more than welcome to phase it, if that's what you choose to do, to reach the eighty-nine dollars over a couple of years. If that's what you choose to do, that is an option for you.
And then, do you, so you mentioned before, and this is kind of a general question, that you weren't here the last time the fee study was done. But yourself or any of the consultants, is there a general impression or kind of gut reaction, I guess, of stuff? Maybe how many, like the percentage that were maybe under what they should have been at that time? Like, was it twenty percent kind of undercharged, forty percent? Like, how much of our fee study was due for kind of this? And I know there was kind of averages for each department, but I just think it's so important that we do these comprehensive reviews so often. And so it'd be helpful to just kind of get, when you're looking at that one from six years ago, anything stand out?
So in my research of trying to find that data, I was unable to locate any such data to give specifics of what was subsidized six years ago. So I, I, I can't answer to that. I apologize. I, I did, I did do my due diligence to try to find it. So, but I don't know if you have.
Generally, yeah.
Okay.
Several of the, several of the user fee studies that we do are those five-year updates, but we still get plenty of new clients where we're going over a fee schedule. I mean, yours isn't even really that old. Sometimes they're ten, fifteen, twenty years old. Shouldn't happen, but it does. And I think the, the trend that we're seeing over time, as we make, I think, the, the recommendation that, you know, cost recovery should be achieved in every situation where you feel that you can in good faith. We, I think we do encounter situations where maybe fees were subsidized in the past that staff doesn't feel should be subsidized anymore. That is a common thing that happens. And we don't always have the data to figure out what the previous subsidy was, but sometimes you can look at it and say, well, that was pretty low compared to what goes into it. And the staff themselves will say, I don't know how this fee was that low. Because this is a, you know, this is a service that takes a long time and requires a lot of manpower.
Thank you. Those are my two for finance.
Councilmember Bernstein?
One more question. Just, I don't know if this is even possible. Do we have any idea what, what the impact would be if we had applied these fees to last year? What, how much dollar impact that would be to the budget? Do you have any idea?
We could do an analysis of that.
Well, I don't want to direct that. That'd probably be a lot of work. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
How much? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, to, to the point on, from fee study to fee study. So in, in the last fee study, and there's a COLA then that happens every year. Are, are you suggesting, and what you've seen in cities, is it maybe a better practice to have more than just a COLA increase? So it doesn't get to be so large when you do your five-year studies?
Um, no. I think, I think five years is a, is a pretty good timeline in general. Again, we're, we're not totally sure why, I mean, some of these, some of these fees seem to be increasing by about COLA or less. Some of them are being increased by more. So we can, we can infer or take a guess that those were previously subsidized and that were. I mean, fire is one of those departments. We, we do, what's, you know, what's, what's happening here in Palm Springs, I, I do see a lot of. We need to do our fire fees. There's something wrong with our fire fees. Our fire fees, you know, they, they'll, they'll take the revenues, compare it to what's being, what's being used in terms of services, and it's, it's a very common request for us. Come in and fix our fire fees. So, yeah, that, that might just be a part. I mean, they, they do interact very directly with the public. It might just have been something that cities in general thought they should subsidize before, but now it's just becoming untenable. But I think five years is, is fine. That's, that's standard. And most of the time when we do a five-year fee update, the increases are not like what you see here for this kind of, you know, first time, let's, let, let's really take a look at these fees and figure out how we can achieve cost recovery this time. That's usually when the really big increases happen.
Okay, I have police. Does anybody else have another department?
I have a couple more. We can do police.
Okay, so on, police, lines thirty-eight and thirty-eight point five.
What page, Mayor?
Fifty-seven. The, we have a proposed fee of a hundred and fifty-seven dollars for sworn officer and a hundred and seventy-three for sworn officer or other. But I'm trying to see how that jives with page thirty, our fully burned and hourly rate, which doesn't match any of those. So our, our rates are two hundred and four to a hundred and twenty-two for police, various police. Not, not looking at lieutenant and chief and?
I'll, I'll let, excuse me, I'll let Captain Melissa Kane answer, answer for those.
Hold on, I see, I see a police officer.
Yes, sorry about that. I was turning the microphone off.
So I see police officer at one fifty-seven.
Yes, the, I'm sorry, Melissa Kane. I am captain with the police department. And we've actually presented two, two fees here. One is for the police officer, and the second one is for master police officer. So there's two different sections there.
What's a master police officer?
That would be the highest ranking police officer that we have.
Do you see it listed?
I don't believe it was on the same page, the senior police officer and master police officer. Page twenty-nine?
Oh, it's on page twenty-nine. No, that goes to airport.
Okay, down here.
In the Wildin Report, page thirty. Please examine it. No.
How do we, what's the difference between a, a police officer and a police master?
So there's actually three different ranks that they break out in the, in the fee schedule there. There's a police officer, senior police officer, and master police officer. So the, the lowest, like essentially a brand-new officer would be categorized as a master, as a, I'm sorry, as just a police officer, and then work their way to senior, and then ultimately master police officer. So those are the differentiations in the cost.
Got it. Okay, all right. That satisfies my question. Thank you. Other police? Mayor Protem? Councilmember Reddy?
Quick, quick question. Hey, Captain, a question on towing, and that's on page seventy-three of the staff report. You have towing, line forty-seven, and then storage on line fifty-one. Just a question, is this, this, this fee, the towing fee is on top of these fees, or does this include the towing fee?
This is a towing fee that was actually dictated by ordinance that was already approved by council. So this is reflective of the ordinance numbers.
Right, but then the towing company adds a, charges their charge on top of this?
No, this is the charge that's authorized by council to check, for them to charge.
Okay, so this is, this is the total. Okay, that, that helps me out. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Captain. Just a couple of questions. One, the concealed carry weapon permit. Can you clarify how many times that's pulled here in the city and how many times you've?
That is very, very uncommon. We've issued, we have not issued any in at least the last two years. And over the last ten years, there's been no more than six of them that have been issued. The County of Riverside has actually taken on the onus of issuing permits for the residents here in the City of Palm Springs.
And then can you clarify a little bit, kind of going back to the rates that the mayor was mentioning, specifically special event billing rates? How's it possible that there's no increase in labor costs for those per hour work?
So like, like Heather had mentioned earlier, unfortunately, neither of us were here and participated in the, the structure of the previous comprehensive fee schedule. So in working with our finance team, we were not able to establish how those numbers were before. But these, these recommended, the proposed doc, the proposed numbers that we're presenting to you today are reflective of the real and actual costs of our team. Those are mine too, for police.
Okay, no more police? Okay, what's next? Anybody have another department? Wow.
I, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I have an engineering question.
All right, engineering. You're in the hot seat. I don't have any for engineering.
Hi, Joel.
Good evening.
I just had one question around grading inspection. On this, there's, it's a very big number in terms of percent increase. It's almost a thousand percent increase. Can you help us understand what that number means?
Well, yeah, it's, there's two of them, right? The precise grading inspection and precise grading inspection, SFR, single-family residential. And I think it's the same theme that we've heard for all the other departments. The older fees were, you know, they were based on formulas. They were, we really don't know how they were established. The a thousand percent increase is because the, the, the comparison is based on the, the number, the, the first fee, which is fifty-nine thirty-three. That doesn't even cover a single hour of an employee's cost. So those numbers were then added to a formula that increased by lot size, or if it's commercial. So it would vary significantly. So the percentage there is not truly a representation of what the fee increased or decreased from. We are now doing really cost recovery, so that's essentially the same, same exact scenario that all the other departments are going through.
So, so the one, this increase to eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and then four hundred and, no. Yeah, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for both is at most because it's? at most because it's dependent on the number of actual time, dependent on the staff member.
Yeah, essentially cost recovery, yes. We're trying to recover the cost that staff have our.
Sorry, this is line five and six on page six of the report or 22 of the staff report. So, thank you. And really, this is just for the public. This is at most, but not.
Yeah, and yeah, it should be noted that the the percent increase isn't really reflective of what we were charging before and what we're charging now. It was based on a different formula. The current, you know, we're doing cost recovery now, but that that swing is really based on that first number, the 59.3, which is, you know.
But this 868, sorry, that also isn't necessarily what will what would be billed because you're saying it's dependent on.
It is dependent on on staff, the type of the project. It could be a one-acre lot or it could be a 10,000 acres, you know, commercial center. So there's there's different fees that get charged based on how much time you spend on the project.
And we're subsidizing that one, the 25%. Okay.
Thank you.
Special projects is next.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. So I'm on page 44 of the staff report. Hi, just a question. So the cannabis application fee, which is on line two, so that's going up significantly. I presume that that's for a new business?
Yes, good evening, Council. Patrick Clifford, Department of Special Product and Compliance. Yes, that is increasing.
Okay, and then on 12, the renewal, is the renewal every year?
That's correct, yes.
And so that's going up almost, what, 30, 3,700? So the combination of those obviously is significant. Is that going to discourage? Is that going to add to, you know, the tax burden they obviously already have, the difficulties? Just curious your thoughts on that.
So when we last reviewed the cannabis renewal fee, it was supposed to increase to the same amount as the new application, and we did not because of the issues they were facing with the taxes. Now that we've reduced the taxes, we have seen improvement in their sales, so it has granted them relief, and we want to recoup what we are, what staff time is putting into these applications because there are quite an extensive project to do.
And the renewals are just as.
Yes.
Time-consuming as the original?
Yes.
Every year?
Every year. They require security inspections, operational audits. They also require that we check with the Secretary of State, check their corporate standing and CDFTA. So there's a lot of layers and a lot of work that's put into these applications.
Thank you. On the the vacation rental appeal, it might be on line 45. That's obviously a couple pages over on 46. No, that's not it. Page 45, 37, yes, 37, I'm sorry. Question I had. Yeah, on the on the appeal, so that's going up $400, and that's just to reflect your actual costs? Are you still, are you getting a lot of appeals still?
Yes, we do. In fact, most of those appeals are for unregistered vacation rentals that are found operating without a permit.
Okay, I'll move on to the next one. I hear what you're saying. Okay, the I just want to make sure on page 46, page 46, line 39. This is a new new one. The city manager indicated this was, and I just want to confirm, and thank you, Scott, for that information. This is for the Picasso homes.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. That's helpful. And then on page 46, the downtown permit fees, which are there on line 44, and it goes obviously down to 50. The information I got back from Veronica, I think that those obviously aren't used. So should I suspect these should all be removed because we don't do any of these?
This is for the employee parking.
Well, and there is no employee parking.
But that's this is what this is, not just downtown parking. It's employee parking you're talking.
Well, right. It well, any of, yeah, several. It has employee and then meter. I mean, none of these really exist, so I think they should be removed unless there's a reason not to.
Councilman, I just, yeah, I would weigh in. You're absolutely correct. They're they're not being used right now. I think there was some thought to keep them in there for flexibility purposes. Should we want to consider that down the road in some, so it was there, but maybe something for council to think about.
Because I was going to ask about the employee one, which was discussed in the parking study, and we have are waiting for the implementation plan to come back. So that one might make sense if we actually do have permits. We have, in our parking study that P S Resorts did, one of the proposals is we actually have employee apartment, employee permit parking downtown and which I think would help alleviate a lot of the parking. And so we might want to have this fee in there just in case that does come back this in the next year, hopefully.
Okay, and how about line 47, 8, 9, meter meter lots? We have no metered lots.
That's correct.
So we should remove those?
I would suggest, if I can make a comment, we have a parking implementation plan coming back, and we we don't know. That's why some of these are in here because I've asked these questions.
Yes, Council, if I may too, from our staff's position, we we decided to leave them in the fee study or this fee study because there's language in the ordinance that talks specifically about metered lots and employee parking.
Which ordinance?
So it's our managed parking ordinance. It's, I think it's five points. I can grab it for you, but let's see here.
Well, the actual is important, which is that the city hasn't have, had, and doesn't have. And so it doesn't matter leaving them in there. It's just trying to update, having things that don't exist. Okay, so we can move on. I was curious on the, you know, I think you'd answered the valet question. That's all I had on special programs. Thank you.
I have one quick one on this. We allow horse-drawn carriages. We have hall ordinance about this, though. Is that right?
We do, yes. We do have a horse carriage section in our municipal code.
This was pre me. What? But somebody can operate a business and doing horse-drawn?
They have the highest fee increase. He might not come back.
You know, we have not seen a permit. There was one operator that was attempting to apply pre-COVID. COVID hit, all applications stopped. We haven't seen an application come in since.
We did, I think we did at one point have.
We did have operators at one time.
Some of the animal rights activists raised a lot of concerns, and so, okay, that was a question. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I do have a couple of follow-ups that might be for you, but they're on, they're under removed fees, which is on page 205. Yeah, page 205, and I think this is under your department on page 205. So these are removed fees. There's a couple of them. One on page 205, the remove the news racks. And news racks, this is the bottom. So I'm not sure why we're removing them because we still have news racks and we have an ordinance that sets all that out.
Now, apologies, Councilmember, the news racks do not fall under the special programs. I will happily point to someone that might have the information about removing the fee, but we do not permit those in our department.
Did you know who does?
It's it's under building safety.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, you're welcome.
So actually, then I have two for building and safety.
Thank you.
Okay, done with special programs? We're on to building and safety now.
Good, thanks. Yeah, so the news rack, Dana, could help me with that?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Dana McAllister, building official. Yeah, so the news racks aren't under building either. Sorry, they're, they're, we couldn't figure out who they fall under, so they don't fall under the state building code. There's nothing that we would permit or or inspect on that. We did talk a little to engineering since they are in the right way. Maybe they need an encroachment permit. But aside from that, there's no way the building and safety department would be able to regulate a news rack.
I love how you got out of that.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
So do you know that then who handles the news racks and deals with them that are currently there now?
Joel.
Because we have an ordinance on them.
Should I hand it over to engineering?
I guess I just want to make the point is maybe we shouldn't remove this because it still is an active program. It complies with state law.
Councilman, I would say you're right. We should just leave it right where it is for now.
Okay.
Where does it go back to?
It's on 204, you said?
205.
205, at the bottom.
Where is it supposed to go back to? Yeah.
Well, they can figure that out, but but we're going to leave it. That's good. So because the program is still there.
But who's keeping all these notes on what we're adding back in and moving around?
The clerk.
Okay, city manager? Okay, what's the next department?
The next one is is on page 207.
I apologize if I could just chime in. The city is not able to add fees to the schedule that was not posted prior to this public hearing. So as a requirement under the mitigation fee act, you have to post this fee schedule that you'll be adopting 10 days prior. So if the fees have been removed and they're not in that schedule, we can't add them back here at this time.
So we'll be doing the same thing with for this as we are for the business license fees. We're just keeping what they are today and not taking any action on them.
Okay, then maybe it's the same on page 207 under the public nuisance. And I was just wondering that that this is potentially a very good tool for public nuisances and vacancies, this and then the vacant building fee on page 209. I'm not sure why we're removing these when they could be real tools. So it's 207, the public nuisance administrative charges, and then on page 209, particularly the vacant building. Yeah. So I'm not sure if we want to remove these.
We, I spoke with special programs on that one. Right now, they run a vacant building registration program. So basically, the permitting and the funding goes to special programs right now, but we do offer an inspection component on that, on the initial boarding. So we were trying, going to think in the future, we should probably see if there's some way we can reclaim those costs for the building side on the inspection side and also make sure that special programs is covered for their running the vacant building registration. So I I would agree, we could leave that in there. I don't think it would be any harm, and we just think we have to figure out how we.
So which one specifically are you talking about? Because like on page 209, the very last line, annual vacant commercial building monitoring, which is a program that was instituted, and that has the $2,000 fee. So what we're removing, all of these, the registration and all of these?
Well, like I said, that's not monitored by the building department, but after speaking with special programs, it is monitored by them, and I don't believe they have it in their fee schedule.
So we're not doing the annual vacant commercial building monitoring anymore?
It's not done through building. It's done through an automated permit, and the the funding goes to special programs, who does the monitoring.
So we don't charge for that?
Not on the building side, we don't. It's an automated permit. Of course, yeah.
We have a code officer who is dedicated simply to vacant registration. So we do monitor them, and we do, it is a permitting process that's done through the EPL, the intergo system, but we definitely should remove it because it is, we do, just this year to date, on commercial properties, vacant properties, is $69,000. So I don't think we should remove it.
Wait, I'm sorry, you would not remove it?
Do not, no, because we do collect, yes.
So you do charge the fee, the vacant building fee?
Correct. It's not, I, like I said, we have been overseeing the enforcement, so we are ensuring that they're registered and we're ensuring that.
Do they register with you? With you, just to understand the process? They register with your department?
It's through the intergo program, so it's online permitting.
So but it says here we're removing that fee.
And I did not recommend that, and I was not aware that they were removing it.
Okay, so we want to take this off and put that back in. Do you know where it is currently? Is it?
Yes.
It's it sounds like it's under building, but they don't, but you charge it.
But could we check? Because if it's, it may be not included in building if it's here.
But now we can't put it back in unless it's, we just keep it like the business license in charge what we've been charging.
I think same as the same as the prior situation, we'll just leave it right.
Leave it in.
I would recommend leaving it in.
Okay, and then the same with the building monitoring, the 2,200? That should be left in too? Is that currently in?
Yes.
Okay. And then and then going back then to page 205, the news racks, we are going to leave that in as well? Okay. Thank you. And then I had some fire questions if they're ready to come back.
Care, are we ready for fire?
What's happening with fire now?
Yeah, we need those new.
Fires coming back down right now.
Thank you.
But don't these have to be posted publicly?
No, the the fees were publicly posted in the part of the the study, but you're reducing the rate, so that is okay. You would be subject to approving the maximum rates. You're allowed to make changes here in the DIA to reduce those fees. That's appropriate.
Okay.
So Chief, what you're passing out now is what you had your team provided to finance earlier?
That's correct, Mayor. Yeah, so we've made copies for each of you and for city managers to look at. The highlighted section are the proposed fees that we recalculated today to reflect the actual cost to conduct many of the services in the fire department, particularly community risk reduction. And in your report, that's on page 33 through page 40.
So which ones have changed, Chief, on here? How will we know which ones have changed?
We can go through them. Councilmember ready? But if you look at your original fee schedule and you look at the full cost, and you would just go line through line, really, lines 10 through 193 reflected many changes, and most all of them were a reduction in fee by a significant amount, again, due to a miscalculation on hourly rates.
There's no increases, though?
No, there are no increases.
Okay. So I have some questions, Mayor?
Of fire, yeah.
Fire, okay, thank you. Thanks, Chief. So just so they'd be on page 32, which is line two, the incident reports. So an incident report, obviously going to $75. What is that? Is that every time anyone has a fire and they want to turn something into their insurance, they get it online and it's this fee?
That's correct, yeah. So we do a lot of Public Records Act. There are requests for emergency medical forms or fire reports done by our fire investigators. So this is a fee associated with that to pay for our administrative staff time.
And how many of these do you issue a year?
Quite a few.
Quite a few. So every time anyone has a fire or something in their insurance, then they pay $75 to get this to submit to their insurance?
That's correct.
It's a good thing they're not doing it at the library. It's $7.71 a page. All right, and then Chief, on, let's see. I was looking at the Knox box inspection, which is line 12. So so my question was, and we had talked about this earlier, so that's up to 600. So so the Knox box obviously is what you charge to go out and inspect, but people get their Knox box from a private, a third-party vendor. And just just quickly, what the Knox box is, is those where police or fire need to go in and whether it's a gate or something, they don't have to have a code. They can use the Knox box, which is secured and has a key, and they can get in.
That's exactly right.
But I don't think it's, the fee's not 600.
Well, the the proposed fee is 597. So so this is, after you get it put in, then you have to have this inspection to actually put the key in and make it work. So so the whether it's an HOA, a business, they have to do two, buy the Knox box and then have this inspection. My concern was what's happening for for more is people in single-family homes, not HOAs, not businesses, who live alone, elderly, somewhat disabled, that if they need an emergency call, that the. call, that the fire department or ambulance or police can get in, and they have a Knox box. So, a lot of cities have that program. My concern was, this is going to be a prohibitive fee, and that maybe we could consider a, a, a discounted fee, much less for residents. I, I mentioned that to the chief. He, he sort of liked that idea. So, for single-family residences to propose a separate fee, and I don't know what that would be. I mean, I would, it could be free, it could be $100, but 600 might be prohibitive.
Isn't there a Knox?
Single-family homes have like some type of gate or something?
Or for their front door. You have it for their front door.
Anyone, anyone in the community, if they wanted a Knox box on their single-family residence, their home, they could apply for a Knox box through that company and get one. And we'd be more than happy to come out and place their home keys in that. That way, we have access in the event of an emergency, not having to force open their door. We can make access and, and get inside and help them out.
Can I, can I just clarify? The residential Knox box is on here as 179. That's on line 171.
So, now, what are you looking at that's different? So, I'm looking, so what is, am I looking at on page?
This is Knox box residential.
171, line 171 is a Knox box residential, which is 178.
178.
Yeah.
What is number 12? What's the difference? Is it like-
So, number-
The other one must be commercial.
So, a number 12, chief, are we reading it right? Where, a number, line 12-
Good catch on 179.
It has Knox box switch inspection is 279. Now, does that inspection of 279 coincide with line 171? The Knox box, it can't, because it also says inspection fee.
Yeah, we would look at those as two separate fees, and to what councilmember Ready was speaking to, to a residential, would be reflected in line 171.
Okay.
The Knox box switch inspection, this is something you would often see at a large apartment complex that's gated. They would require a key. If I didn't have the sensor to open up the security gate, we could use a Knox box to do that. So, when we ask that those be installed, there's a fee associated with that, and that's what's reflected here. And our proposed fee for that would be 279.
I see, okay. So, you do have a residential rate?
The 597 is not on top of the 279.
No, the 279 is what we're proposing for line 12.
Yeah, well, that is very reasonable.
That, that, that's helpful. Thank you, chief. The, the next one is on line 13, the arson investigation fee. My question is, who, who do we charge that to? And when?
Councilmember Ready, we currently don't. We currently do not charge that fee to anybody.
So, the current, the, the current fee that's here of 252, we don't charge anyone?
We do not charge anybody.
And what, is there a policy that, why, when we do or not do?
No, we don't have a policy, and we reached out throughout the, the region. And here in Riverside County, no one really charges for that fee. It's typically done by the, the captain who's on the fire engine, if it's done at that low level. If it's required to have another person come out, we'll still do that service and not charge a fee for that.
So, is this one we don't need, or we should?
In the future, if we decide that we do want to do that, it's not bad to have it in here. And that's the way I've looked at many of these fees that we're not doing now. It is a tool in the future, if we decide to look at recuperating cost in the future, it's nice to have, just in case we do need it.
Okay. And, and then, the, line 15, the business, new business license inspection, I think is that, that's one that you've reduced, because that was 444, now it's 238. So, this is one you reduced?
That's correct. We looked back, and we looked at the hours, and who was, that was allocated for, and that is 238.
Okay, perfect. And then, let's see. The special events for our, line 38, special events for our minimum per person. So, that's the 641. Is that per person or for four hours?
That is for four hours at the rate of a plan examiner that we came up with that fee, at the 641.
So, so when would you have someone go to special events? Like the crowd, crowd issues? Or fire, fire watch?
I'll have my fire marshal who oversees that program and describe a couple of events where we do have some of our inspectors standing by, or the fire marshal himself.
So, it would be the 641, well, it would be 641 then for the four hours?
That's correct. A four-hour rate for one person at the fire plans examiner rate.
Okay, all right, that, that answers my question. That's fine, thank you. And then, let's see. So, on 39, the film permit increase, that's one that you reduced. Good, okay, thank you, that, because those other ones, questions were because of when they were so high. So, I see how you've reduced them.
Yes.
That's helpful. Yeah, well, that's really helpful. Answers a lot of questions. One, wait, plan resubmittals. Is that another one, plan resubmittals? Yes, you reduced that one too. Wow, you knocked out a lot of answers to questions, chief. Thank you on that. And we already talked about the floats. Thank, that's all the question I have. Thank you, chief.
All right, you're good. Thank you.
Other questions of fire?
Just thank you for the scramble and getting this. This feels a lot more comfortable. And I don't know what spreadsheet miracle work you guys are doing back there, but great job.
Mayor, could I ask a park question? He's quick, park, park, so.
So, we got parks next. We didn't do parks yet?
No. Hey, Nick, thanks. It, it's good to see the golf course is not requiring a subsidy anymore. City manager informed me. Thank you for that. That's really great news, exciting. But the question that I had on the Village Fest fees, the annual increase, do you think that's going to have a problem in getting vendors? That's always been an issue for increases, and I know it's been difficult.
Good evening, mayor.
On page 61.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Nick Gonzalez, here Parks and Recreation Director. No, we feel really comfortable with these fees, that Village Fest already continues to attract a lot of vendors and a lot of interest. And so, we feel that this is an, an adequate increase to our Village Fest fees.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You have in there the Village Fest corporate sponsorship?
Yes.
We're not actually getting any corporate sponsors, is that right?
That is correct. And from my understanding, in the past several years, we haven't had any corporate sponsors. This allows us, though, to have a corporate, corporation come and exhibit and have a booth space at Village Fest, if they're giving us a service in, in exchange for waiving that fee. So, it'd be like a photography vendor that maybe is doing some additional photography services for us throughout Village Fest, we would give them booth space. But we haven't utilized this level of sponsorship in several years.
Okay. Have we done, just curious, have you done a P and L on Village Fest to know how it does for the city? I mean, I know it adds to our businesses.
We have not. We've explored doing some additional economic impact financial analysis. We just don't have the capacity within our budget to go ahead and hire someone to do that.
Okay. I would suggest, because earlier today, we approved the parade vendors, and-
Correct.
Sponsorship seems like there's an untapped opportunity, so.
Yes, yeah, we, we are definitely looking at revamping the way that we do sponsorship program.
Okay. And where are we with the nonprofit, the friends of the park?
Yeah, so we are working with the people for Palm Springs Parks. They are hiring a consultant to do some board member development and some other work to gear up and build up their nonprofit status. So, we're currently still working with them to, to be able to kind of move that forward and create that designated nonprofit for us.
Okay. And then potentially, that could help lower fees for things like camp or other things if somebody sponsors it.
Yes, yeah. Our intent is that a portion of that would have a scholarship program to allow us to direct people to have scholarship funds to help lower classes, fees for classes and programs for us.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Yes, mayor Protem.
More comments than anything, but I just really appreciated, there were several, like, spaces that were like up to three hours, up to eight hours, and I don't, didn't remember that happening, that structure being there before, maybe I'm mistaken, but it seemed like a really fair strategy to try and decide, one, how to pick a room, but then also what room would be the most kind of bang for your buck, essentially. So, I was excited to see that. And then, and just the people for Palm Springs Park have been, been pushing this conversation around our parks usage and recreational usage, and so grateful that you're working with them to make sure they're doing the due diligence, so they're ready to go, to kind of help you supplement wherever we go.
Yeah, we're excited for that partnership.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have?
Yes. I did have one quick question for the airport.
Okay, I have one more, sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
Nick, just one more question around swim. I noticed that there was free for 12 and under, and then a family rate. I think it was like $30. Are those new? Are those, how, how did those compare from before? Can you talk a little bit about how those were developed?
Yes, we get, since we're right adjusting to the high school, we get a lot of high school students that come in and want to utilize the space. So, that fee for youth usage at the swim center, that is new. And then, same thing for that group rate. And so, we're trying to get, get more people and more residents to utilize our facility. And so, we're trying to offer that as a, a great benefit and an amenity for our community members to utilize the swim center.
Yeah, I think that's, especially that family rate for the pool, for comparison, for some of the private places in town for pool and water play, that family rate is cheaper than a one-ticket-
Correct.
-entry into some of those spaces that we have in town. So, it is a really, really great deal. And also utilizing or generating revenue that we weren't able to necessarily do before.
Yes.
And then, there was one more thing. Oh, and just being able to rent the, the smaller pool, just a lot of really creative uses on how people can pick places, so great job.
Thank you.
All right, so Harry, you got to come justify why your copying fees are still only 10 cents.
Yeah, yeah, really.
How do we get Jeannie to come over and run her copies on your machine?
Good point, man.
It's still revenue.
Thank you. Director Barrett, just a question on parking fees. I, I appreciate that there are times that come when you have to do that, but, but just by comparison, traditionally, it's always been that we have been equal or lesser than Ontario, Long Beach, some of our competitors. And I think in talking to you, you'd said that's still going to be the case. Could you just refresh our, our memories and, and highlight what that will be?
Absolutely. So, we actually remain less than our competitors. We actually had our financial consultant run in another analysis, and our, the next highest or next lowest airport would be Long Beach charging $30 per day.
And ours would be 28 an hour.
26 an hour.
26, and theirs is still 30, great. And, and Ontario is?
They are. Ontario is at $35 a day.
Wow, okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Around that parking fee, though, I mean, that is their highest parking rate, which is closest to their terminals for those pure airport parkings, but ours is a flat 26 fee across all of our parking right now, right?
Not correct. $26 for parking in lots A through D, which is closest to the terminal, $18 for the overflow lot.
Oh, 18 for the overflow, okay. And then, so, okay, so that, that's really helpful. The other thing I was going to add, and this is just an ask to the city manager and also for you, maybe in the next six months or so, if we can get kind of a parking plan of the airport of what it would take to get a shuttle service or valet service, you know, really looking at our pure airport competitors, and what do those services look like? What do those parking amenities look like? So that we know how we want to use this parking revenue for, to, to help get us there. So, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any more airport fee questions? All right, sweet. Are we done? I know. Mr. Ready, are we?
Yes, thank you.
We're wrapped up?
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, so if there's no more questions for staff, thank you all for bearing with us. I'd like to open the public hearing. Publics invited to speak on the matter for up to two minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We have no public commenters.
Well, how about that? The public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to accept staff recommendation with a wide variety of comments that the city manager was dutifully writing down?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure. I've got a lot of them, but I think Ms. Janela back there in the finance department is recording all of the changes that we've asked for and recorded, and so they will all be incorporated into the final schedule.
Yes.
Okay, so this includes all the fire changes that were presented to us, but previously were presented, and did the public see them previously?
We have uploaded those changes on our website.
Yeah, okay. Okay, very good. So, we have a motion by councilmember Bernstein, seconded by councilmember Ready. You have a discussion? Oh, go ahead.
Sure, yeah. Mayor, I just have a couple of things to just highlight. I just wanted to thank you for the domestic partnerships explanation at the beginning, because they were really high, and I think that's, as we've discussed at previous meetings, a really important service that the, his city has historically offered. And I wanted to just flag, because we had a lot of discussion last time, the, the, under fire for the, for family daycare annual review, it is decreased from $340 to $238, which I appreciate. Again, we want to make sure that we can allow more family daycares in our city, because there's a huge need. And then, I just wanted to flag that there is an increased cost for safety training classes that the fire department offers. So, it went up from $107 to $1,104, which, again, makes a lot of sense because of the staff time that it takes, and that's just a flat rate for all sorts of different safety classes. But I just want to flag that for the public, who maybe has used these services in the past, that they are more expensive, but I do think that that's a very reasonable rate still for what's being provided. And then, just thank you so much for all of your work.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Just a couple of comments that I saved for now, but I guess I could have done while we were going through our questions. Just so that's noted, I would like to see the temporary event permits phased, just kind of alluded to it, but I didn't specifically ask for it. So, that was the temporary event permits of at least four vendors that had the 800% increase. The ADUs, even, even for those non-standard ADU permit reviews with planning, I'd like to keep those flat. I think ADUs is a part of our, you know, aggressive housing goals, and so that would be another request to, to see in, in those changes. The other thing, though, and, sorry, this might be a, I don't know if we can do questions against our staff, but I had asked around those fires, the safety trainings by the fire department, and was told that these don't affect any group unless an HOA wanted a private training held exclusive for their, essentially, community. So, we can get some clarification from fire around who exactly those increases would apply to, but the groups that are typically using them would, would not see those. So, I hope I'm summarizing that email well. If fire's still here, they can clarify that, so.
So, did we talk about ADU fees staying flat previously? Do we have that in a note?
Well, I kind of half, half said it, so that's why I wanted to say it as a comment.
So, let's go to that page. What, where's the ADU?
That was, um-
63.
It was number two, under planning, the accessory dwelling unit. So, that was the fee that was currently 758, going up to 1352. So, a fee increase of almost $600. That- Um, so a fee increase of almost $600, um, that I talked about. So that would be one that I think is worth subsidizing and, and really having it be part of our housing goals.
My understanding from Chris, though, i- is this the, this is the fee that applies to the complex applications? Wasn't there, we had two, uh, uh, two levels. One was a simple, easy one?
It's the non-standard, um, ADUs.
And that's, is this, but this doesn't say non-standard. So what, where...
Saying the other ones go direct to building. The only ones that go to his department are the ones that require a non-standard review.
What's the rate in building, then? What do we propose this to, to remain steady at where it was? What, um...
This is the one that stood out to me as a pretty big increase. Um, I didn't notice that, or no buildings here. They're already...
Do we have building? Where does, where are ADUs in building?
Excuse me, Mayor. Uh, Council, uh, Chris Hadwin, the city's planning director, had a prior family commitment, and so he had to leave for the evening. Uh, there are probably answers that he could supply to you, uh, at a, you know, through an email process, information.
Maybe Dana could clarify the other...
So ADUs would just, they'd fall under, um, typically new residential construction under those permits. So, and those have been the new residential ones. I know, uh, Wildon had prepared some numbers, um, but, um, the way that we had to recalculate the fee schedule, since we're going to a square footage-based, uh, fee schedule versus valuation, we actually dropped those by about 2% uh, over the, the previous two years. So those are overall, overall reduction for ADU, uh, building permits anyways.
So how, what's, what's, what line is that?
Um, for, let me see if I can find that way. It would be, so for the building side,
Yeah.
it would be, um, under the, uh... All right, let's take a second to get this going.
Is it under the 0 to 1,200 square feet?
So, yes, exactly. It would be, new would be 0 to 1,200 square feet, correct.
Okay, and that's significantly, it's twice the fee.
It's actually, it's, it's reduced, so...
No, no, I'm, uh, from the ADU.
Oh, from the ADU, yeah, correct, yeah.
From Planning's, uh, non-problematic ADU. So what the, where do you...
But these, this 0 to 1,200 is any building, new building, and ADUs just fall within that, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Right. So it's kind of a more expansive review.
A more complex-built ADUs.
It's, it wasn't so much no, not more complex. It was, they were non-standard based off of the, the setback or other kind of requirements. So, I mean, I guess I, Dana, do you have any thoughts around this 0 to 1,200, um, that is now at the about $2,400 fee? Given that it's ADUs and other potential constructions, is it worth looking at reducing that or subsidizing that in any way? Or because it is more expansive, is it important to kind of keep it at the 2,400? Where, where would you fall on that possibility?
Oh, for, for the ADUs, so for our, uh, new construction, we actually found that we're actually reducing our costs. Um, like I said, I know what the, um, the, the report that you received, um, shows it to be increased, but, um, because of the, the cost basis change, there was actually a reduction in the average. So I could certainly provide that information to, to Council later if you'd like. There's a lot of studies we did on it, but we found that with new construction, we were actually reducing it, uh, a little bit, and, um, that's how we actually gained, uh, the support of the Desert Valley Builders Association.
Well, now you got me, because it shows that we have a 51% price increase.
You're talking about the, the 0 to 1,200?
Yeah.
That, I, I don't know where they came up with those numbers. Ours are a little different. What we had to do was we actually, um, took the average size, um, of, um, of new construction, which was about 2,300 square feet, and we created a whole new table based on a square footage-based price versus a, um, evaluation-based price, and we're able to meet that, uh, actually reduce it about 2%. As you go down, the, in square footage, the prices actually drop a little bit more. As you go up in square footage, the prices go up a little bit higher than, than the average that we've charged in the past two years, but, um, it definitely was not a 51% increase on the, um, on the new cons-, new single-family construction.
Then, how, what, what are we looking at?
How is it an increase if it's new?
Now, the fee itself has increased this year over last year.
Oh, it's a new fee versus a...
Yeah. So are we, are we looking at this right, City Manager? So in building and safety, uh, 0 to 1,200 square foot, uh, residential new permit.
Mr. Mayor, tell me what page you're on.
Page three in, um, the Wildon packet.
Nineteen in the staff report.
Line five.
What page was it? Page what?
Nineteen in the staff report. Line five.
Or three in the Wildon packet.
And our question, Mayor, correct me if I'm saying this right, um, the fee in building and safety is about double in price than what it is when it goes to planning.
You're talking in comparison to Planning's fee versus comparison to our former fees in the building department?
Correct.
Oh, got you, okay. Yeah, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to Planning's side, um, as far as how they're charging it. Um, that would probably be the best answer by the Planning Director, but, um, the fees may be a little bit higher, uh, based on maybe additional office time that they have to spend reviewing. I think they, they had mentioned more complex ADUs, which would make a little bit of sense, I guess, in, in their case.
All right, I might, I, I don't think I'm following you, though. You, you had mentioned that you think the, the fee went down 2%.
Oh, yes, you're talking about for the building department fees?
Yeah, your building department fee, uh, new construction, 0 to 1,200 square feet, we went from, uh, $1,598 to proposed $2,415, showing a 51% increase.
So, yeah, so it's, it's difficult to take the old fee schedule and compare it to the new one, just because of the, um, we changed the cost basis from square footage to, um, I'm sorry, from valuation to square footage. There were also a lot of redundant fees contained in that schedule, as well as they were charging for, um, initially inspections, plan review, and permanent take. We had condensed some of those fees, and, and it's, it's hard to actually take the old fee and say that it went up 51% because it was a number of different fees. What we did is we took the average for the average single-family residence, was about 2,300 square feet, and we came up with a different number than that. But it is, it is lower, I can tell you that.
It sounds like, um, it sounds like there's, uh, you know, perhaps some contemplation on reducing the 0 to 1,200 square feet category.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand what is written down on the piece of paper and, and what we're hearing. Um, so what we're hearing is, this is not the fee that, um, that the department has established, and what we're reading on paper is, um, a, a, a 51% increase, uh, from last year to this year.
Right, and I think, um, I think what he was trying to express is that when they, um, the, uh, the, the fee for the 0 to 1,200 square foot category, the old one, um, is just reflective of those smaller units, and since they've simplified a, a great deal, the, um, the, uh, formula here, there's, there's a base, and then there's for each additional 100 square feet. I think what he was mentioning is that for the average, uh, single-family unit, it, it went slightly down, um, rather than, uh, saying that all of them, uh, or that they, they were decreased across the board. In this case, um, I would assume that for the smaller categories, they did increase, and for the much larger units, they, um, decreased. Uh, one note that I wanted to make is that if we do reduce the 0 to 1,200, um, square foot, that, that base, um, category, it would reduce the fee for all new residential construction, because it's that base plus the, each additional 100 square feet. So doing so would, would bring down the, the fee for all, all new residential.
And to clarify, we don't, I'm not disputing the fee here at all. The fee is correct. So the new fee is, is correct. I'm just saying that the increase is, is not, it's not as, as high as reflected in that particular report. We, we came up with something different. So it's, um, but the fee is correct, so.
Um, I do, I, I'm, I do think it's so important we make ADUs as easy as possible in our city, um, and people who want to extend their homes, generate revenue, opportunities for full-time, more, uh, housing units, and so I think, uh, I, I hear what you're saying in terms of messing with the fee for the building might o-, mess up more, way more than just ADUs, and so I'm, I'm fine leaving it. Um, it is just strange that it is, a non-standard one is, is cheaper than a building, uh, permit. So, um, but I would still go with my original request to keep the ADU planning be flat, at least, since that seems like an easier one to incorporate.
Just to flag too, if, if there are additional questions that you want to get addressed by Chris later, we can always decrease fees at another time. So if there's, if you want to, if, if Chris came back with more information for you that you wanted to bring back, we could still decrease.
It's, I'm asking Council to keep the ADU fee
Right.
for planning flat, um, and it's more the building one that I think is unclear to me, how we could make it, that the more standardized ADUs as easy as possible. So that'd be the one that maybe we come back to.
I think maybe we come back with ADU when, when Chris is available, but this is the maximum we can charge.
Right.
But we're gonna add, give some requests that we come back with, what we can do to incentivize ADUs. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I thought we needed Chris here, really.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we can change or, or hold one flat and then end up penalizing somebody else who's trying to build the same exact ADU going through building, and they're being calculated at a different rate. So they're gonna be treated differently than somebody who's going through planning. So I, I think, I agree that, um, if we...
But they're, they're different now, aren't they? So if we go with the recommendations, they're different.
Yeah.
No matter what, they're different.
$1,000, yeah.
Also, I might add, Mayor and Councilmembers, that Christopher Hadwin did mention that, um, state law is very permissive in this area already, superseding many of our zoning rules and incentives on ADUs, uh, across the city. We're also working on a pre-approved ADU program with building to offer a clearer, faster path to permitting ADUs. So I think there is more coming back to you in the future.
He's supposed to be with family. Why is he texting? Uh, okay, so I, I, I've heard that, uh, you know, let's, let's go with what we have in here. These are the highs that can be charged. We can come back, get further guidance from Chris, and what's coming down from the state, and possibly, um, bring to Council a lower schedule, uh, to accommodate or incentivize, uh, the building of the ADUs, and, and figure out the difference between building and planning. Okay? All right, so, um, uh, we had a motion and a second, and there was some discussion. Did everybody else get to discuss and contribute? Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor, and we've got a vote occurring. Okay, thank you all. That was not the easiest conversation, but appreciate it, and thanks to all the staff that, um, have survived. Um, okay, next item, uh, oh, what are, where are we at here? Um, business, oh, you need a break? We have five min-, you, you really want, okay.
Five minutes.
I know, we have five minutes left.
I think we have longer than five, Chris.
You do?
We have one item left. Why are we tied? You made it.
It's just the incentive. Well, it's...
I'm sorry, you gotta...
People talk till the end.
People talk till the end.[340.12]
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, I definitely think, I think it's a combination of what you just said. I think it's tourism and, and event-related economic impact from events because remember, you know, one of our roles with Gary coming on board is, again, to drive tourism to Palm Springs, which, again, creates a big economic impact to all these local restaurants, local businesses, but then also the conventions we're driving. So, so, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would like to probably narrow the group that are actually giving the feedback based on, on the areas that we're, that we're surveying, just because, you know, if you're talking about hospitality for all of Palm Springs, based on the conventions that we're bringing, as, as you probably know, you know, convent- conventioneers normally travel, you know, maybe a half mile from the building when they're doing events, so that's where the biggest impact's gonna be.
I understand. We're looking at, though, in a tourism infrastructure district, so perhaps the participants in that could be included in a survey.
And, Councilmember, the other thing we might consider doing, I know council's expressed interest in wanting to create a Bureau of Tourism Advisory Committee, and, you know, when they get that going, that could be a good, um, a subcommittee of that group, or maybe the whole committee, that could take that on as a task to do some outreach and how are we doing?
And if you have a list of infrastructure district participants, that would be a good list to talk to. So, and, and, and not that, again, it might just gauge, like, okay, what can you do to make them understand the benefit of the convention center better?
Uh, Councilmember, just to emphasize the city manager's comment, actually, in Section 4.15, our, my attorney reminded me that there is an actual survey that discusses the very topic that you're desiring, so they're contractually obligated to also do this survey through the Bureau of Tourism Services, so, uh, it will certainly happen.
Great, thank you.
And if I could just, one point is, the survey will be important, but we really want to do it more frequently, so, you know, either quarterly, monthly, with the, the key business stakeholders in the community, we want to be talking to them all the time, because if we're going through a certain part of the season and they're not seeing what they need to do, we want to be able to adjust on the fly and not wait until we get a survey at the end of the year, so, thanks.
Additional discussion questions? Mayor Protem.
Just had one question around the nonprofit use of the convention center. I, I noticed that this is, the organization has to be headquartered here within the city specifically. Um, can you just help me understand versus one in the valley versus one that does service and, um, uh, provide services or has clients in Palm Springs? I know we have other, you know, kind of programs for nonprofits that is not quite that exclusive, so can you just walk me through a little bit how that narrow window was defined?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, I think the intent there was that, uh, to ensure that our local community nonprofits could ensure that they are prioritized in this space, uh, and so we did have a discussion about how that would be defined, and we thought it would be best defined by having nonprofits that participate or are headquartered within Palm Springs as a priority. It, it's a question of policy, so if you'd like to expand that, we certainly can, but I think it would make the, the space more competitive for our local nonprofits.
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, I think there's just, when I think of nonprofit usage of, um, the convention center, there's large events, for sure, that we have major nonprofits, even here in Palm Springs, who are, you know, utilize large space, um, and that's one revenue opportunity. And then there's, um, smaller organizations, maybe they're in Palm Springs, maybe they're in Cat City or La Quinta, and they have clients, and it's hard to find space to meet people, gather people, to host meetings in the summer when the convention center is often empty. And so I just want to make sure that there's, like, space for both of those kind of, um, booking opportunities, and I'm wondering if we're maybe missing out on the smaller ones, um, you know, weekday to four rooms versus, you know, a major conference by a nonprofit. So, um, I don't know if you have any kind of thoughts or reactions, or what the intention is, is really more for larger conferences, then I, I will respect that, but, um, if you have any reaction.
Thank you. Uh, no, that's a great point. I think the intent here is to try to carve out a very specific local community nonprofit use. You know, there are several large national and regional nonprofits that are going to be clients of the center that would not fall under this definition, so I think we tried to define it as narrowly as possible, to let people understand that this is about, you know, our local community nonprofits, not a regional or a larger system. But again, it is a question of policy, so if it's something that you would choose as a council to open up to, we would be open to hearing that. I, I think it would cause challenges in terms of booking the space again, but, I don't know, do you want to add anything to that, Dave?
Yeah. I think there's, uh, it's a great question. I think there's a natural progression. Um, the one thing I, you just said, which I've heard loud and clear since I've been here, is that summer's dead, and, uh, and I think I told the story to somebody, is, is every time I come in and I get an Uber, I always ask the Uber driver, "How's things going?", and they're like, "Terrible." They're like, "I'm going to San Diego to drive Uber for three or four months because there's nothing going on here," and they don't know who I am, and a lot of times they're saying, "Well, there's not a lot going on at the convention center." So, so the, the goal is to take it from a eight-month, eight-month-a-year building to a 12-month. So, so as it relates to nonprofits, you'll see a progression where we're, hopefully, there's gonna be more, like, large, high-impact events at the building all the way through summer, uh, which provides opportunities, but we still find a place for nonprofits. And to answer your other question, if, if a nonprofit is coming from, like, I agree that the policy, at least my feeling is, it should be for Palm Springs in the immediate, but if, if we get somebody in LA that is coming here and wants to do a large nonprofit event over the summer and we have the dates, we're absolutely working with them. And if you look at the language, the language says rates based on, you know, availability and time of year, so let's say it's a Monday, Tuesday nonprofit event in August, and it's 142 degrees, you know, but it's, but they're inside and, and we can do a lot for the event, and it's gonna drive room nights and money, I mean, we're definitely gonna consider it. So, like, I want to see the building year-round.
Yeah.
And, and we're gonna get there, so, and, and nonprofits, and, and I don't want to always just use the word nonprofit, community events.
Yes, yeah, 'cause it could be a small business who wants to do something.
Yeah, it's gonna be a mix.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
At our buildings, we make, you know, job fairs, condo expos, HOA events, those are inherent in all of our buildings in between massive conventions, and they don't want to leave us, so no matter how busy we get, they just move from this month to this month or this day to this day because they want to be at the building, so, we'll get there.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Councilmember ready?
Uh, thank you. On the, uh, nonprofit policy, I, the, the one thing I'm not clear on how you're going to actually implement it, I was, wanted to see a little more specificity on what the discount will be, though I think the way it's structured here is the director of the convention center, the manager of the convention center, is gonna just decide. There's no percentage, or is, they're just gonna decide, complete discretion?
Well, really, at our, typically at our buildings, the general manager has, and the director of sales have the discretion, discretion when they're working with nonprofits, and again, if, if we're talking about an August event versus a January event, because it's not that January event for a nonprofit may not occur, there may be a nonprofit event in January, but, but again, from a rate perspective, you know, that, that's a high period for us.
Well, let me ask it this way, then, I get, I get that, and that makes sense, but the, the problem that's gonna create, that, that does create, is the nonprofit gets a rate, and then they're gonna be coming to each of us and saying, "Well, I need a better rate," and then that sort of defeats the whole purpose, uh, because, you know, then we got, well, can you get a better rate? Can't you get a better rate? But if there's a specific discount or percentage, or I don't know what that should be, and maybe it's different for different times of year, uh, then it, it is what it is, and we can't change it. So, that, that's what, what, how will you handle that? That's what I'm concerned about.
Uh, typically, it's handled at the building level, just to be honest, is, is that, yes, you get the, like, one of the buildings I oversee is Miami Beach, and Miami Beach Convention Center is right in the middle of a huge community in, in Miami Beach, and, um, they frequently walk across the street to the commissioner's offices and talk to them, but, but then they're turned back over to the building to talk to the general manager and the staff there, and we work through it and work a way out. Um, but, but it's a great question, and if we have to land on something, you know, as it relates to, let's say during those summer months, like, a certain discount, yeah, we're more than willing to talk about it, absolutely.
I would, I would look at this, and I will tell you, this, this has come up in the past, where nonprofits have said, "We would like to use a convention when it's not being used, but it's too expensive." And, you know, I don't know what they think is too expensive or not, but the point is, we've already had this, and we've had it at times when we know the convention center was not being used, and it seems like there wasn't really a solution, other than go talk to the convention center and we could ask them, but, you know, we, we had choral groups that are, couldn't find a place to perform.
Yep.
And they wanted to do it during, you know, Coachella weekend, when there was no other event going on, and they didn't need, you know, parking, and they couldn't, they said they couldn't figure it out. Now, I don't know if they just asked, "What's the rate to rent the, the convention center", but if they knew there was a discounted rate, it might be a different story.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Um, again, we typically have a case-by, handle case-by-case basis, and we've been very successful, but, um, again, we're willing to talk about something. Uh, I just would be careful with expanding it from a year-on basis. I think it's one of those things that it's really seasonal based on availability.
And again, there's, and again, this is not to take away, but, you know, we have, we have some really good nonprofits. I mean, we have the Harvey Milk Breakfast, which is like one of the most powerful, moving things that we have here. The only place we can do it is at the convention center.
Yep.
I, I would want to know that they, you know, don't have a problem one year.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, so, I mean, again, I'm...
Yeah, well, well, just based on what I'm hearing is, you, you, we're gonna, we're gonna get it going, and if it's a problem, you'll let us know. Well, and, and so for us, 'cause, 'cause we may be in that, that position, so I guess we can always revisit it after you get some experience. But, but, but my sense is that they're gonna be asking us to ask you to get their thing lower because there's nothing specific in here and it's discretionary.
And it's just, it's, it's gonna be expensive to many nonprofits to see what it costs to host an event with AV production and food, um, that's just, and, and we, we're not gonna be able to expect those vendors to come in and have a negative impact on their budget. But working with the convention center, certainly, you know, reducing and lowering those costs that, you know, that we do have an ability to, certainly makes a difference.
Yeah, I, I've never been in a building or been associated with a building where, where the partners, as well as us, haven't worked together. Um, it, typically, though, our buildings are just, they're, they're, they're jamming, and so we, the nonprofits get in there, but I, I, I mean, my, my recommendation is to let us get it rolling, and, but I'm more than happy to come back and, and revisit it, and I'm more than happy to meet with any other nonprofits immediately upon taking over the building on Sunday. If we can get to Sunday, that'd be great, and I'd be more than happy to meet and, and talk to them, and Rob and I can revisit, and we can talk about it moving forward, and maybe we bring something a little more specific back. Uh, but I'd also like to talk to our partners, or the, the partners who will become our partners on Sunday as it relates to food and beverage, audiovisual, IT, things like that in the building, to your point about budgets and things like, I just want to be respectful to them, so.
Okay, if I could move on to the incentive portion, uh, Mayor, a couple of questions. Uh, so, on the room nights, thank you for including that. On the event bookings, I was just curious, I'm not sure what this means, complete client list and qualified leads, so are, you know, qualified leads don't end up in bookings necessary, necessarily, so would it be better to have bookings as opposed to qualified leads?
Thank you for the question. Somebody walked with my notes. Yeah, there is definitely a difference between leads and booking. One of the keys in the interview, uh, key points that they made in the interview was that they were gonna seek for new markets that have not, have been under-pursued in this building, and they offer a great opportunity for revenue and potential and filling room nights, and they repeated those, uh, to you in a presentation that they made to you previously, I think it was prior to July. And this particular part of the incentive fee is, tracks the progress in being able to put these groups into the building. Type of build, or the type of business that's coming in, it looks at the size of the facility, hotels, if they're in the region, if they'll look in the market, and so we first have to build that client base and identify the groups that will come to this building, see what time of year they'll come here, do they come to this region of the country, and that's the groups that we will pursue. And much like planting a crop, these things don't germinate overnight. These groups that we're looking at now take one to four years. You book them, and your booking date's one to four years in advance, depending on type of show, so we want them for...
But, but if I could ask, so, but this, this is for their performance, so this is actually performance. Qualified lead is, a lead is not a performance, and I'm not, it also says, for example, place 40 new and potential events, so, a new is, a potential event is not a new event, so we're, we're providing them an incentive to do potential events?
We're providing them an incentive to create a client list and start farming that list and putting those events on the book. That is correct. And then when we get to year two, we start also now looking at the conversion rate, which is the events that are on the book, how many are we starting to convert from tentative to definite?
Yeah, so in year two, they only have to achieve a 20% conversion?
And that's a pretty substantial number, considering, uh, that we do compete in the market against other facilities, so when you look at corporate business, for example, which is one of the four here, if you get 5% conversion rate, you're doing well.
Well, let me ask you this, approach it a different way, then, maybe this will help me. So, the potential, when does it get on the calendar as a potential, on inquiry, response to an RFP, or is it an application? I mean, when does it become real to get on a calendar?
When, when you have your sales and marketing effort, somebody, uh, you put out an offer, and they ask you to hold a set of dates for you...
With an actual application?
They will fill out, they will send a letter, they'll fill out an application, depending on what type of event it is.
Well, that's why it's important to define it, and, and I say that because, you know, we, we, we want them to be successful. We don't want them to have, make it too simple, and, and a qualified lead in a potential event is not the same as a actual, and, and since it's a performance-based, it should seem to be, it should be more actual.
Well, you have to give time for the events to make their selection.
That's what, we, they sold us on, they were gonna do it, and so, great, we want them to, but we want them to actually do it.
But the way the business works is, the client will come here, they're gonna look at three different cities, they're gonna ask you to put a set of, of dates on your book while they consider which of the three cities to choose, and those, uh, dates will be one to four years in the future in this particular size of market, and at some point, their boards will select a city, and then that will cause a conversion from that tentative to a definite, or the tentative goes away. That's why we're also asking for, like, 80 new events to be put on there, because you're only gonna get 20 of those events on average, so you have to overachieve with potential bookings that sit on the calendar until the clients make the decision. The things that impact that decision are, some are required to rotate by region, so the, this targeted client list, they're not available to you every year. On the national events, they might rotate east coast, center, west coast, so you only get a shot at them once every three years, so that's why you have to first put together a substantial list of clients and work that, and that list is in the hundreds of clients, even though we may only wish to convert 40 or 50 of those events a year. You have to work that larger list, and each client is different, their requirements are different, and, but it is, this is like planting a seed, and you have to wait for it to germinate, and that crop doesn't show up for two or three or four years.
Well, that's, that's why they have their, that's why they have their fee.
Well, and because of the...
Now, you get that, but this is for performance.
This is for performance, that's right.
So, potential events are not events?
Potential events are the...
Qualified leads are not...
Qualified leads and potential events are how this business works.
But, but we don't have to pay for, for performance for non-performance, so you don't have to pay performance for potential?
You pay for performance by how many clients you put on the books.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to convince you, I'm just saying to my colleagues, that it, it, it's certainly skewed in their favor, that it's potential and qualified leads and not actual conversions to booking, so, so, so I get that, so, well, maybe you can answer another question. On the, uh, revenue performance, uh, I wasn't sure, it, so, for example, they get 5% of the base fee for additional $100,000 in revenue over what? Is that the current base? Or the budgeted? So, so they get between four and five million a year in revenue, so is that how it, based upon?
Question, a lot of this is, what are we doing now, and also, right, in terms of room nights and, and gross revenue and occupancy? Like, they get a bonus at 50%? Are we below that now?
Yeah, well, the current doesn't say potential at all.
What's it?
It doesn't say potential events currently.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, Councilmember?
No, please, go ahead.
It was your question.
Oh, is, so, so on the revenue, gross revenue performance, so they get a 5% of their base of the incentive if they get up to a hun, zero to $1 over the revenue base? What, what revenue base, we, we talking about the...
The budgeted annual revenue.
Budgeted annual revenue, that's projected.
So, say it's $5 million, if they get $5 million and one to $5 million, $100,000, they get that 5% of their base fee?
Correct. And that's how it's written, yes.
But it's over the, the, the actual budgeted amount?
Correct.
I just want to confirm that.
Yeah, projected budget, forecasted budget.
Do we know the budgeted amount?
Yes, we do. There's a forecasted budget that's prepared by the convention center in budget, uh, budget year seven, 125 to 626, that forecasted amount is 4.166 million?
Which, which is 800,000 less than the previous year.
Correct.
So, so it's almost, it's skewed less in their favor? That's their number?
Uh, this was a number prepared prior to the budget, so this would have been something that the Finance Department and the ASM Global would have worked through with the Finance Department to determine that projected budget.
Which was way different than what they were, said they were gonna do.
Well, but I...
They were, they were gonna, we wouldn't even have to subsidize it anymore, but I'm just, for, for reference, right? So, the revenue projection's down 800,000.
Uh, the...
So, if they get $1 more than that...
I can tell you for this, for example, the forecast in 2425 was 2.6 million, and the budget was 3.5 million, so there is an offset once you perform the, the activities, but we have to forecast it ahead of time and, and to determine how much we're going to...
Right, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and, and then the other question I had is, I, I wasn't clear on what the coordination with facility and connector designers' contractors is in the annual business plan results. That, that seems, because, and I will say that because the client survey is probably one of the most important, and that's going to, this, these two categories make the client survey worth less, and so I'm not sure what these two are.
Uh, Councilmember, just wanted to say for the record, David O'Neill with Conventional Wisdom, who's one of our consultants.
I'm sorry, yeah. So, for a significant portion of this initial term, the building's gonna have construction activity occurring in it, which we know will impact, has a potential to impact some of the survey scores, but we also want to ensure that the building management and operation coordinates with the, not only the district planning work that's underway, but the renovations in the facility and the expansion to the facility. So, we need them to, their success in working on scheduling to minimize disruption to clients is what we're paying for in this piece, so, uh, the first couple of years here is going to be a, a challenge for them with renovation going on and eventually expansion going on in the first two years of a five-year contract, so we wanted to...
This was a question also.
We wanted to incent them to work well with the designers and the, and the constructors because they will be the keeper of the event schedule, which we're trying to minimize impact to.
But, uh, his question is, I'm not sure how the Public Works Director is gonna be the arbiter of that. I mean, that's, that's gonna...
Public Works, Public Works Director is running the district improvement project. I'm sorry.
I, I think that's probably what was intended to say, the engineer, the city's engineer, because he will be the managing office of the, of the...
But, but the engineer won't be coordinating, I, I, I just don't see how the engineer's gonna be coordinating the convention center stuff with these things. It seems to me to be a better job for the city manager or you, who are gonna be...
Happy to take any direction that you feel is appropriate.
If I can just raise, this came up in, when we were talking with the convention center plan, with the working group, as well as in the initial, um, RFP discussions award, is that we're gonna hire Oakview Group, but we're going through this massive conversion, and we want to make sure that whoever we hire, this came up before the RFP was, was finalized, is working with us to ma, to make sure we're still maximizing, uh, the potential of the convention center and ensuring that they're cooperating, giving their resources to help with the facility conversion and the, um, and the connecting plan, as opposed to just leaving it to the city, because you don't want them to clash, having them work together makes it a more productive process, especially when it's this huge process we're trying to do very quickly.
Okay, I, I understand that, so, I, I guess my, my request would be, I, I'm just not sure the Public Works Director or the engineer is the great arbiter of this, it, you know, certainly, if it's the city manager, he, he knows the correct one, maybe it's you, as you are for the annual business plan, uh, I'm...
Happy to take that obligation on, I think that's an appropriate recommendation.
It would seem like that's, it's a good idea to have an economic development who has been actively involved in the convention center.
And then, could you just explain, what's the annual business plan results? I'm not sure what that means, how, how that's, and again, 'cause this takes away from the client, the client survey weight.
Well, yeah, it's not really intended to take away, the client survey is also a separate rated category.
Except it makes it a smaller percentage.
Well, but this is the explanation of the means and methods used to achieve the results that they get, so you have a rating on the results, and then you have a rating on what methods, where they present to you and tell you how we got there, what our plan is, what shows we're gonna attend, and I think, you know, David could also expand on this, but it is the effort made to achieve this, and they, they want to report on it. It's usually a good news story, they report on results rather than just simple bookings, but on hotel room nights, on economic development, put it in a, in a form that is for public consumption, so they understand the mission.
So, if I could ask, I, I get that, that it's a, it's a, it's a presentation of what they've done, but how, how does this actually work? You have to get an excellent in all of these activities, or one of them, or three of them? It doesn't, it's not clear. And I only say this because administering these incentive programs for a lot of years, without clarity, it creates an awful lot of problems.
Right.
So, they have to achieve an excellent rating...
Correct.
In all of them, one of them, and what's the criteria for excellent, or good, or fair, or poor? Because you're gonna be the arbiter of that, and you're gonna have a lot of pressure on you to do, uh, what do you do? I don't know, how do, how do I decide this?
Yeah, I...
Is what I'm saying.
I think it's a very good question, Councilmember. I, I think what we could do is assign a, a number value, at some point, it's gonna be somewhat subjective, of course, because, uh, the, the data elements, marketing activities, sales activities, results, et cetera, are going to have data behind them, but I don't know that we're prepared to define each of those tonight, but happy to put a scale to it, uh, or come back with some information that we could tell you how that's actually gonna be scored. But back to your original question, yes, it does take a little bit away from the client survey, so this was in an effort to balance the entirety of the incentives across a wide variety and also a wide variety of timelines, but I, I think your point is well-taken, under 2D, happy to develop a, a quantitative scale if you think that would be more appropriate.
Well, it certainly will be, be helpful to clarify now, obviously, 'cause we're approving this, so we're approving it without it, so I, I don't know if, you know, how, how we do it. Uh, we obviously need to move forward, I just raise these issues because they can cause potential issues down the road, uh, I mean, I'm confident the city manager can figure out how to, to incorporate such things in here, uh, so I think that's gonna have to be important, or it's gonna, I think, cause issues, issues later.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion?
I would just throw things on that. One is, I would say, if it's too, try to make it too quantitative with each thing, you know, if, if they are, if their sales activities and results are, you know, excellent, and that has made a huge, huge improvement, but, you know, their, their community impact, like, was uncertain, or marketing activities, we don't have it, like, you want to have some discretion in this, I would say, and so I would be careful about, like, a scale that is too objective, I mean, you, as economic development, are gonna have a huge amount of impact, input from the community, from staff, from council, and I would say that should give you a good gauge of doing it, and, you know, you're not just gonna say, give them a sc... And, you know, you're not just gonna say, give them a score willy-nilly, you're gonna be pretty thoughtful about it, I would assume.
Mayor and council, I, I hear that, and maybe one thing we could do, certainly, there's going to be other reports coming before the council regarding the updates to the Convention Center, in a variety of topics. Happy to deliver an updated table with regard to how we might be scoring that, if that's something that would be of interest to the council.
Yeah, my only other question on this is that, for all of these quantitative things, we have a base for the exhibit hall usage, it's fifty percent occupancy, what is our current occupancy in the last year?
Dave, or, Rob, do you wanna speak to that?
About forty-six.
General Manager, Rob Hampton, is, for the ASM Global, is forty, about forty-six percent, is what he said.
Okay, so this is an increase that they would have to do in, in year three?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
And, and I just raised it, because this will, like, over, you know, double and a third of their, their fee, which is, is a lot of money. So, we want the performance, but we don't want it to be too easy either, so.
I very much appreciate the, the tone of the message.
And the more specificity, the more, more clarity, it, it, whether we owe it to them or not.
Very good.
So, if we-
Did you wanna vote on these now, and then here are an update? We do have one more update from the general manager, but we can move to voting on this, if you wish instead.
What's the update?
I can be really quick.
Do you wanna come on up and? No, go ahead, come on.
Good night. So, anyways, mayor, mayor pro tem, councilmembers, Dave Anderson, again, thanks very much for, for having me. So, I just wanted to provide a really quick update, as it relates to where we're at in the transition, transition happening on Sunday. I, I'm so happy it's here. Sixty days has flown by, but it's a, it's an exciting time, not only for our company, but also for the team, and a lot of stakeholders here that we've been talking to. So, let me just run through a couple of things for you, just really quick. So, staffing, we're fully retaining the entire current staff, they've come over, which is great news. So, as far as connectivity with our clients, and consistency with our service, it's gonna be there. We're doing staff orientations, we have a bunch of corporate people coming in, that are already in and coming in this weekend, so we'll be doing staff orientations for all the staff to OVG, and then also for benefits. As I, I don't think I've spoken in front of you, but Commissioner Bernstein and the mayor, at one of the meetings, I said that, a councilmember, I'm sorry, I said that, you know, the most important thing of a transition is the staff, and is to take care of the staff. So, really, most of the time, in my, in my world, has been devoted to make sure that all the staff gets brought over, they all get their offer letters, they're all taken care of, they're all on payroll, which all that is checked off. So, then our corporate HR people come in on Monday and Tuesday, and we do HR orientation, and then we do benefit orientation. So, in this situation, they'll actually be choosing their benefits just for October, November, December, but then we have an open enrollment two weeks later for next year's benefits. So, it's a lot to handle, but we'll have our corporate people here to do that. We have a OVG staff welcome event, we do it every new building. So, next week, our president's flying in, a lot of our VPs are flying in, we have a activity for all the staff that is now coming from ASM over to OVG, in the morning, we're doing a luncheon for the staff. We do this in every single market, we're really excited about it, and some of the staff is, got it, some of the staff is, is actually participating and helping us with that. Venture agreements, so, food and beverage, AV, and security, we're all good to go there. Finance accounts are live, city has funded it, Heather is probably gone, she's done an amazing job, city finance is wonderful. ASM reconciliation is finalizing that, thanks to Rob and his team for taking care of that. Partner alignment, I've already spent a lot of time with Scott, Colleen, and Carolina, Carolina with Visit Greater Palm Springs. Hotel community, community, I've had a lot of conversations with them. And again, from a management perspective, we're really excited that the senior team is actually coming on board over with us. So, Rob Hampton, who's running the building, and all of his directors. The director of finance position was open when we got here, so we actually are interviewing for that position, we'll finalize it probably late October. All of the directors and Rob will be assigned to a mentor within our company in the industry, so, a fellow general manager with OVG, director of sales, director of ops, so they'll be able to integrate into our company right away. Tourism, you know, you got to meet Gary, I've got to spend some time with him, so he's just finishing up kind of the orientation process. And then, really, right now, it's really aligning the tourism priorities going on. There's a lot of stuff happening right now, that we need to stay focused on, that are happening in Palm Springs, but then there's the new priorities coming forward, so I look forward to that. And then, we've got a bunch of corporate people coming in, regionally and nationally, and we just couldn't be more excited. So, I just wanna say, and then also, the, the connectivity and, and the renovation project, I'm, I'm a part of that already, and I appreciate that. And, and I think I said, mayor, at the, the last meeting, the fact that the community, you know, the hotel community, the city, and the stakeholders are all in one room talking about improving the Convention Center, this is something you don't see around the country. So, so it's, it's, it's really, really good, so we're excited, and, and I got the speeded-up notes, so I'm done. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, any other discussion, questions? So, do we have a motion on the table to accept staff recommendation with greater specifications on the quantitative rating factors to be spelled out by city manager and director of economic, economic development? Motion made by Jeffrey Bernstein?
There was also the question to talk to the vendors about, third-party vendors about the nonprofits.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you. Now, we have public comment on non-agenda items, and-
Yeah, you're good, I may have to represent this gentleman.
Where'd Felix go?
Yeah, thanks to Wayne.
Oh, no, Wayne helped.
If I could, uh-
You're standing in for Felix?
Yes, Mr. Barahas asked if I could stand in for him. He and I had a very energetic conversation. His concern is that his business is, supports a number of hotels, he is currently located on the Accelerator Campus, which is now FAA-regulated, and of course, requires FAA use. He's in, working through the lease process with the airport, and he does have concerns that he wanted to express, that he would have to move, that would be very costly. And so, he asked me to relate to the council, and I have agreed to go and see him next week, that we take some of his concerns into consideration as we move forward in, in the Accelerator Campus process.
Felix, your time is up.
Very good.
Michael Joseph Pitkin. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have other folks online? Michael, we just called your name. And are there any folks online? Nobody else, okay?
No further commenters after Michael.
Michael, you're up.
Michael Joseph Pitkin. Fifteen years ago, when I started my religious journey on coexistence, I asked God of all for both light and dark spirits and saints, including white buffalo woman, to guide me, so that I do not end up digging my own grave with my head cut off and my legs shoved up my butt. I asked all sides for special dispensation from all holy requirements. I did not make a dark Christian, and I do not make a light Satanist. Since being in Palm Springs, the spirit elders all know I am here. The spirit ancestors all know I have their attention, and they all want to talk. Every element and every creature visits me, all without my being under the influence of peyote. Even the most capable medium would not want this much. My message is simple, nothing in life is perfect. War is an easy answer, it is the coward chicken way of life, to force others. Real difficulty is finding a way to cooperate and exist in respect alongside those one does not like. There is nothing I have said in fifteen years that already has not been said by others before.
All right, thank you. Our next item is city council and city manager request an upcoming agenda development. Did I miss our handout today?
It did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, taking a look at the tentative upcoming schedule. I do wanna point out, October twenty-second, we have a very full agenda that doesn't include any of the consent agenda items. We will have a brief presentation by the Village Fest Board, and I think they do this every year. We have the Ramon Road eminent domain resolution of necessity as a public hearing, as well as two historic designation items for two properties. And then, our Housing and Community Development Department will be bringing forward the Gene Autry Housing Project proposal for us to, for you to consider. Wayne Olson will be giving us an update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, so we can put that into action. We have an on-street commercial vehicle sales ordinance that the city attorney is working on. And then, the updates that council has been asking us related to the vacation rental ordinance, so we'll have that on the agenda as well. The twelfth, our legislative update by Townsend, hotel incentive program update, I think we'll have ready for you, a couple more historic designations, and then an update on cannabis, our cannabis ordinance. And then, of course, on December tenth, our last meeting of the year, we'll have council, our council reorgani, reorganization meeting, and assignments to committees, and all of that. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council, do we have any items? Councilmember Gardner.
Not, not an item to add to the agenda, but I just been getting a good amount of emails about the zoning code, just wanted to let the public know that we are about a year into a two-year process for updating our zoning code, which has not been updated in a meaningful way in about forty years. And so, through this process, there have been lots of community outreach events, either in person and online, which will continue, but they're meant to get people talking and participating in this process, which is really important. So, really appreciate people providing feedback, but just to remember that nothing is, is set in stone at all, that we're probably, we're still about a year away from this item coming to the city council, and a lot will change between now and then, and what's finally presented to us. But I really appreciate all of the public's input, and just, don't stress too much, it's all part of the process, and we take all of your feedback, and we give it to our consultants and our planning department, and we read it, and all of that informs what will finally come to city council in about a year.
Other council comments?
One quick one?
Yes, please.
I just wanna congratulate the finance and budget team, who are awarded the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. So, yep, great job, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Good thing we don't have too much to do in October. Let's see, let's please note, October eighth, twenty twenty-five, the city council meeting is canceled, and the next regular city council meeting will be held Wednesday, October twenty-two, at five thirty PM. The meeting is now adjourned.